I want us to reopen this and go again. Open up you guys. This one. Our board. I have to leave at eight thirty, I would say. And we're gonna have a fairly full agenda between now and eight thirty. So, just wanted to make you aware of that.
Yeah, if we can work out the language then we're all set.
What's to work out? It's a shared driveway.
Yeah, but it's, I understand it, but it says there are two blocks.
Take the number of lots out of it.
And I think that'll be fine, which is what I was discussing.
Okay.
We like.
Yeah, just take the number of lots out of it.
I think that'll pop the door.
Okay, I think we're ready to start. As I just said, I have to leave for another meeting at eight thirty. So, as I understand it, we'll begin with a review of the decisions on the day camps. And, I know. And then move on to a discussion of the, I think it's, are we talking about River School here at all?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll move on to that if we can. And then, at eight thirty, when I leave, Steve Oppenheimer will take over the chairmanship of the meeting. Do we have any public comments at all? No? Good. In that case, let's review the decisions on the day camps. There are three of them, right?
Yes. They are all at Regis College. They were all done at the last meeting.
You wanna go in word? Star?
Yep.
Summerman?
Why not?
Star is the first.
Yeah.
We have on the agenda, yeah. So, Star was, this was the first time they've come before us, right?
Yes.
This is yes, so that's why the three year.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. And I guess it is standard for us to go through the whole development site plan, the agenda, huh? That's just why not?
Well, yeah, because it, well, because it is a special permit. So, you know, we have, we put it on there because it is the, those are the terms of the special permit.
Okay.
All three of them the first time? So, do you?
All three of them were first time, yeah.
Remember what happened was that the day camp director, they had us, even though some of these camps have been, it's Regis for a long time, had to sort of classify the ownership of them.
Oh, right.
Everybody got sent here.
Yeah.
The only comment I have is, okay, six, item seven.
For Star.
Parking?
Uh, the, no, conditions of approval.
Yeah.
Uh, item seven, applicant shall inform the planning board of an increase. I think you could take out.
By, yeah.
By out of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true for all three of them.
Okay.
Anything else? Steve, anything else?
No, can I make a motion?
Sure, sue, you all said.
Yes.
Okay.
I move that we approve all three certificate of action. Can we do that? Do we have to do them individually?
Uh, I think you should do them individually because they're special permits.
I move that we approve the certificate of action for college-bound overnight camp with the revision noted.
Wait a minute, are we approving Star League?
Oh, sorry. Is it an order matter?
Well, we said sorry.
We said we could go through this. First one.
I move that we approve the certificate of action for the Star League Overnight Math Camp with the revision noted.
And the next is journal.
So, one with a second?
Yes, second, sorry.
Call on paper.
Aye.
Unanimous. Moving on to the next one was which, the journalism collective?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, they're all on, they're all on the same page.
Just some minor details.
So, I move that we approve the New England High School Journalism Collaborative.
Yes. Second?
Call on paper.
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Yes.
Finally, college bound.
Ones.
Can I go ahead and make a motion?
May I?
I move that we approve the certificate of action for college-bound overnight with the revision, overnight camp with the revision noted.
Second. Call on paper.
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. That's that. Moving on to River School, River Site Plan Approval for Boardwalk Over Boble Brook. We'll try to hold this to about forty minutes or so if we could. If you could just make your presentation, then maybe twenty minutes. We, that would give the board a chance to express its comments, and then we'd open it up for comments from the audience if there are.
That sounds great. As long as Stanton fifty big to twenty minutes.
What, do your best.
I'm sure that, I'll do my part to, my name is John Loester, I'm here on behalf of the school. With me here tonight, representatives from Stanton, David Ardone, Josh McAtkinson. Ben McGovern is here from Rivers as well, and Josh and I is here on behalf of him. And I'm just gonna, like I said, I'm gonna try to be as brief as possible. I just wanted to give a brief overview of the project in general, and let Josh and Dave talk, David talk about the specifics of the filing of the project. So, as you can see from the board here, it's stolen my thunder. It's a, it's a boardwalk that connects our main campus to the west, to non-such road, to give our students safe and efficient access from our main campus to the athletic field that we constructed on the property of the end of the road. And so, again, that's, the primary, primary goal of this, of this project is to provide that safe and efficient access on our own property to keep the kids obviously safe, but also keep using our property as much as possible. And secondarily, though, I do, you know, it is important to the school, you may have been in front of you all enough that you know that we're essentially on a pencil. As you can see, we've got non-such pond to the north, a wetland to the west, and Boble Brook to the east. And we try, whenever we can, to try to expose our students to the environment around them. You know, the wetland is a great example. We used to have a boardwalk that went into the wetlands back in the eighties, I believe. And so kids would go out and, yeah, thanks to them, and take advantage of, you know, science class would take advantage of that, art class would take advantage of that. And we're excited to be able to provide that opportunity again. With this boardwalk, we're anticipating yet again, painting classes will go out there and paint the wetland, you know, paint the wetlands, they'll paint the picture a little better. And science classes, you know, we do a lot in our sixth grade, drinking water, which we talked about before, before before. And so it's a, it's a perfect, it's sort of a perfect tool, purpose for us, and so we're very excited about it. Again, primarily, it's a, it's an access route, the boardwalk through the, over, over Boble Brook. I'll let David and Josh have, give you a little more detail of it.
So, I think, yes, familiar location, so, Winter Street here, main campus, entrance road, you know, exit. So then, access to non-such is here. The school does own this athletic field. They own this parcel of land here along Boble Brook. And they obviously own the three thirty-three Winter Street parcel, and the property line is actually in the middle of Boble Brook, between, between the parcels. And then as we go down, you know, we, you know, recently constructed, in the process of closing out the project, punch lists and stuff, but, and then they own a series of lots down here, and they don't own these two lots. So, the proposed boardwalk starts here at Keynes Hall, the corner of parking lot, where we have some accessible parking too. That's important, personally, some parents that might come over. But, so there's a short pathway, and then the, the flag wetland, riverfront bank is roughly the same, or should say the buffer, is roughly the same on this side, the bank for the stream is out here in the middle, and then the flag wetland, it's again, the buffers. And so the boardwalk would be constructed across there. I can show you some details of that, but mini helical piles is proposed because the Army Board considers them to be non-disruptive, and, and we're proposing either a, either dry season construction or winter construction of those piles, and then building a deck on that. It's five feet wide, and there are five feet clear underneath it, complying with the DPD guidelines for, for, to get sunlight underneath the boardwalk. And we do have a small, sort of larger, larger area in the middle here that's roughly ten by ten. The idea behind that was the class, the classes, you know, eight to ten students could, could be with the teacher and talk about the wetlands and things like that. And it's close to the, close to the open water, and they use in and out. And then, get off the, the boardwalk here on the north side, and we propose a path along, meandering along, that is porous material. It's basically like a gravel path, crushion material, and, and very, very narrow and very rustic. I mean, the idea is that, you know, we've staked it out, but ultimately, before construction, we'll, we'll review again with conservation as an order, to avoid any large trees and, and the other intruders. And there is, I'll go to the, go to the marsh. Shows it in a little bit more detail. You can see, you know, the spacing of the mini piles, the abutments in the paths. We're proposing a full construction access here, but then, as you have go, continues.
Maybe you just wanna, I, I think the.
Yeah, you'd have to move this forward if you do that.
So, just talking about the path as it goes up, you can see some of the trees on, we tried to survey most of the trees there, so you can kind of see that sometimes we're avoiding trees and meandering. And there is one significant, semi-significant change to this plan, then in the filing. We sent it to Eli this morning. We met with Mr. Fleischer, who is the first abouter here. The pathway was shown exiting a lot closer to his driveway. And so, again, he had concerns about, and I think rightfully so, about people crossing, you know, the kids coming, coming off the path, and then instead setting them onto the road, going across his property. And he happens to be located at a point at which the, the road bends, so the students could, could come off and kind of, you know, the shortest point, you know, a straight line, they, they could have cut across his property. So, we met out there with them, and there's a couple of significant trees here. We wanted to kind of, you know, pull it back, but we felt like if we pulled it back into this location, it was, it was a spot where we could get the students and get the pathway back onto the roadway pretty easily. And then these two trees actually provide like an obstruction, and you can't walk on the shoulder, you kind of have to, you know, get into the road. And that, that will keep them sort of on this type of, they're not to the path. So that's, that's the most significant change. There are some other things that we talked to Mr. Fleischer about, and I'll jump into that now, which was one of almost the way. So, we're proposing, Eli, this section would be a good, I think we gave you the, we have PDF of a det, sort of a detail.
Uh, yeah.
Right, or you want the section?
The section. So, we're trying to propose again something very rustic, something very non-intrusive, and, and we have to provide lights on the boardwalk itself. So we're proposing this very small fixture that.
Down just a second. Flare.
Yeah, so, so this shows, it's the same light fixture. It's a very small sort of full cutoff light fixture, and, and this angle thing is actually an additional shield to, to, to cut off any, any reflection and to aim the light down the boardwalk. So this shows the boardwalk railing, simple light mounted to the side, so above the surface, it would be four feet above, above the deck's surface, allowing us to shine a light at an angle and create a pool of light. And then, so we're proposing just a very similar, simple post, and this would be along the pathways, mounted, a four-foot post mounted like three and a half feet above the pathways. So again, just to raise it, and this is a, and there, there's seven watt LED fixtures that are actually dimmable, so each fixture is dimmable. So if we put it on there, and anybody thinks they're too bright, I have the ability to turn them down seventy-five percent.
How are they powered?
So we will have a, both of, we will have a conduit that goes across the bridge, that carries power across, and then we'll have a direct burial wire on any pathway to, to bring the light to those. And, and this is fairly accurate. We have what the beam diagrams, the spreads, aiming angles and everything to kind of create, you know, where we have the pool of light.
Didn't mention your total mass. Nineteen.
Total.
Double was nineteen.
Oh, not. Well, the total of all the fixtures, I know sometimes you would hit that.
Nineteen thousand six hundred.
What are the foot, average foot handle per square foot?
The average foot handle, we came up with, we don't have actually, you know, actual photometrics in the, that you typically get from, you know, pole-mounted fixtures, because we're aiming at an angle and everything.
Yeah, adjustable, so.
Yeah. But we were getting like two foot handles in that little zone there, as, as kind of an average. We were getting kind of like, like seven foot handles right, like, you know, if we, if we aimed at an angle like this, we were getting like seven there, it tapers up to zero. You know, so we kind of came up with a average of like two and a half.
Yeah, the idea is more for weight finding, it's not for security, it's not something that's, it's just to get the athletes at, at dusk really to get from the field, I mean, over to the.
The fields themselves are not alone.
Correct. We talked to Mr. Fleischer about how, you know, they're, after, you know, when we get up against the, the shorter days in November, and, and, you know, in March and spring, that, you know, a game or a practice might be ending at dusk, and, you know, it's, it'll be, it'll be darker under the trees than it, than it will be along, along the boardwalk. And so, it'll be on for like a half an hour after, you know, practice or the game, or something like that, and we agreed to kind of, maybe at eight o'clock, you know. And it, because it depends on the season, when dusk and whether it would actually be shut off. Like, this time of year, you know, at the end of the school year, in the spring, they, they used to give it on, with sun, with sun setting slightly.
On a timer, or how would they? Time will vary according to dusk.
Yeah, according to need, yeah, exactly. We, we kind of talked about whether or not we should say half an hour past sunset or past dusk, like, then you're, you know, you'd be really accurate, you're gonna be resetting the thing every, every couple of weeks. But again, that's what we kind of said we'd do every month, change the timer, and signal later than eight o'clock, just.
Well, we threw out, yesterday, Steve, was, lights would be shut off one hour after dusk, but never any later than eight o'clock. To cover spring, where actually dusk came, like, the sun's at eight forty-five right now.
And there will be a person, the neighbors will know, to call in case, if Dr. Bid this happens to just go on till midnight or something like that.
Yes.
I mean, so there will definitely be.
What do they call it when that happens?
Oh, they call Ben.
Ben said they called you.
Exactly.
All right, but, all joking aside, there will be some.
Absolutely. We talked about that with Mr. Fleischer, I, you know, and as David mentioned, that they're, they could be dimmable too. So if it looks like, you know, if our neighbors feel like they're too bright, you know, we're always, they know how to find us, and we're welcome to, you know, we're happy to kind of try to accommodate any of our neighbors.
Because I thought we actually had some, one person. Yeah, but you say they're dimmable.
Yeah, they're, they're dimmable, they're rating.
Yeah.
Right.
They're dimmable, and, and depending on how you take that average, it would be like point one, because we're zero in between those.
Right.
So typically, when you have that one foot handle or half a foot handle, it's usually like down to the now, you know, we're gonna take that.
Your, your schedule says thirty-two fixtures?
Yes.
All right, but here, you showed thirty-six on the plan. Is that?
Thirty-two is the updated since, uh, yes.
Okay, so you're gonna take some out?
When we shorten the path.
Yeah, shorten the path, yes.
What's the spacing between them?
Uh, twenty to twenty-five.
Twenty?
Twenty to twenty-five.
It kind of depends on, it's a meandering path, so it's about twenty-five, twenty-five.
So it look, it looks like they don't, they're not consistently.
They're, on the boardwalk, they're twenty-four feet, except for at that, that one area where it is the, and then in the back.
This is based on the spacing we have laid out for the railing, and then here, they're a little bit close together generally. They're closer to twenty here.
We have that shade canopy of, of a.
Did you, I mean, is, was it a function of putting a light fixture on, on every post, is, was that the idea?
No, it's every other.
Every other post? So the posts are ten feet apart?
About twelve.
Twelve feet apart?
Yeah.
Uh, okay, and, um, but, but the distance on the, on the walkway, is that just to try to be, sort of consistent with what you have on the, on the boardwalk? Is that, was that the idea?
Yeah.
But why did you want to place them closer together than, than?
Because we have the, the shade canopy of trees, it's gonna be significantly darker than it is on the boardwalk too.
Yeah, and the manufacturers, Brad, we were talking to, was kind of, they said it could be anywhere from twenty to thirty feet, we'd be comfortable with the fixtures, so we, with the, with the meandering, you do, you get a different spacing.
Yeah.
You mean, it might sound dramatically different, and, and does that make some, a lot of reflective level?
Yeah.
Increase it one bit, can you increase?
It just looks like a lot of.
It's a long span.
Yeah, and they literally are like this.
Yes.
It's three inches wide.
Yeah. Do you have a, by any chance, an elevation of the boardwalk construction itself?
Couple of different details here, so there's kind of a section over the water, a section at sort of a lowest point where it begins, close to the helicals, because it's five feet clear, most of it's five feet clear, condition of open, and this is how, you know, the little concrete separator is separating the structure from this soil, having a, you know, the ground, how it comes to that.
All right, so what are the, what are the horizontals?
Here?
Yeah.
They're cables. It's on cable railing with a wood, with a wood frame, the wood top, and those.
So how do you keep them tensioned?
Um, there are little tensioning cables where they, where they connect, sort of, and tension on.
All right, but you're gonna have, do you, do you need more than one at each end, or?
Um, yeah, they, we couldn't span the whole thing, so they'll be, they'll go like a hundred or a hundred and fifty feet, and, and so some of them will go through, and then some of them will get tensioned, they'll be opposed to, and it's just hard. If you don't, then, then they'll be dangerous.
So would that be a double post, or how, how would that work?
Um, they'll, they'll, yeah, they might go through, and some of them, they'll just have a slight stagger in them, the hardware might go through a post on the side, and then the new operator will start the other one.
Stainless steel cables, is that, is that what you're proposing?
Yeah.
What about the finish? Of the wood, of the wooden members?
The wood is natural.
Natural. The, the platform in the middle of the span, do you have any details of what that would look like?
Very, very similar to the deck. We don't have a large one here. We can just, so. It's just, you know, like a ten by ten square, you know, there. We're just kind of changing the decking, so you come along and walk in perfectly, or overall that decking, we're just gonna kind of change all the decking. We're just, we're walking.
Close to the corner? At each of the corners, or?
Here?
Yeah.
Yeah, there would definitely, definitely be a post there, a post there, a post there for the railing, and then the helicals will continue underneath, be a helical out here, a helical out there.
So you won't have a wood rail anywhere along there, but in the little square, you will have a railing?
We'll have a top railing on the whole thing.
Oh, the whole thing?
Yeah, a whole wood top. Just the cables would be sort of guard for, kids came.
Four feet?
The railing is forty-two.
Forty-two?
It'll probably actually fill it at like forty-three, which is just to make sure it hasn't created. Yeah. Five foot, this will be forty-two, so that shows some, shows a little bit of railing there.
But there is wood, this top member is what?
Yeah, that's.
That's.
Can I see the detail of the lighting yet? Where are the lights positioned?
This is the same, uh, that they're saying up there. So the guard rail, that's showing the cables and the top rail and then the, the top cables attached to the side, main rail, most of the path.
So the posts look like they're shown at a forty-five degree configuration to the, to the line of the rail. Is that, is that just diagrammatic?
These are the, actually, oh, showing the light locations.
Yeah, okay, so it's not a post itself?
That's the, right, that's the pathway. You can't even, you can't see the base on here. These are actually the piles below.
Oh.
And then the posts are just running along. Those are the piles.
Those are the piles. And one of the dark ones?
Those are just progrates. It's shown here. It's kind of a typical plan where they're twelve feet outside. So they're kind of tied into where the piles would be twenty-four feet. There's a center that was twelve. Attached to the, attached to the side.
To the span row?
Yep.
In terms of the site work, it looked like the most difficult part of that is where it was level, where you, you cross the, the old pass here and then when the trails are around.
Correct.
There's two areas, but both of us, we don't, it's two one or two one.
Yeah, and actually, you know, some of that was, was actually, the worst, the case was probably down there. Um, we do have in our, in our pathway detail, you know, we do have to make up a little bit of, a little shoulder grade we have to make up. If you want to do all this long and some stuff, you kind of, cross it and parkland details and national park details.
What was that for?
No, it's, um, porous, it's a gravel. It'll, it'll look like a gravel. You know, the idea is that it's, um, a porous surface and it's a crush on a blanked stone. So that, you know, from a drainage standpoint, you know, there's a lot of that.
You're going to use this in the wintertime or, or, what seasons of the year?
May and.
No plans to show it.
Plans not planned to show. It won't be used in the summer during camp. The, the field will likely be in use during camp. Most of the use of the field, that will be used by the camp, camp on such, um, which, which on the other side. So, um, it would be very, very bad side.
Yeah.
One thing I can, um, I think we, for the most part, have an agreement with, with Mr. Fleischer. We said if he, if he is having a problem with, with, still cutting across the top of his driveway, at the corner of his drive, top, at the corner of his driveway there or wherever he wants, we'll either put some screening in or a couple fence sections. Um, you know, so the thought was, let's see how it works out and, um, um, if the decision says, says they're not, um, it is a problem, we're going to do whatever he thinks we'll say is, we'll meet that problem.
Sure.
Yeah, you might.
They have to put a fence in this day, have to come back?
Who, who wants plants in? Maybe you can approve the fence now if, if, if it has to go in.
We don't know what it is.
Yeah, you don't. Be whatever he wants for a fence.
Yeah, we'll, I'd like to take a look at it.
Yeah.
Is that okay? Okay, so, all right, do we have comments from the neighbors?
Yes. Don Gentile, on behalf of Mr. Fleischer. I'm an attorney at a law firm in Boston called Lawson and Leitzen, and I represent Mr. Fleischer along with attorney Jeffrey Allen. Regrettably, Jeffrey Allen's traveling soon to be here tonight. Um, as Mr. Nardone said, the applicant, Mr. Fleischer felt very caught off guard by this project, uh, because he did not receive notice of con, con proceedings. So he felt as though this went very quickly and he didn't have time to properly evaluate it. But in any event, he did meet the applicant yesterday. Um, the applicant agreed to work with him on several things, which I mentioned, specifically ending this path about seventy-five feet shorter down the road. Um, they, they have a landmark, which is a tree on that road. Um, also the, the lighting requirements, which were already mentioned, there was definitely some concern about those and as well as the screening. Um, we would like, I expect that the applicant will have to come back to this board with revised plans. Uh, we would ask to have the opportunity to review those plans before the meeting. Uh, if there's an opportunity for us to present comments to the planning board, like, like you said, uh, some conditions could be memorialized in the, in the decision. I think we take that opportunity. Is that something we normally allow?
We, we certainly take it into consideration.
Great, great. So I think that's something.
I, I assume what you're saying is that you would suggest some conditions for us to consider.
Yes, in line with the discussion between the parties. Uh, you know, I, I'm correct in that you won't be voting for that, right?
No.
Okay. Do you anticipate having one additional meeting?
Well, it depends on the sense of the, of the board. Uh, we could either continue with, hold another hearing session and take testimony, or we could continue it for the purpose of reviewing a draft decision.
Okay.
Um, we'll continue either way, but typically when we're considering draft decisions, we don't take testimony.
Okay, I mean, we, we would appreciate the opportunity to address you after we receive the final plan, if that's possible. I realize that's your discretion, we would ask for that opportunity.
Yeah.
That's the final plan. And so he sent to Jeffrey and Jonathan, um, yesterday with, with a revised, you know, pathway.
Okay, so my understanding was that those are just sketch plans and that there would be a more detailed plan, uh, to come?
We, the plans we sent to EMI were revised to include that sketch.
Okay, so from your perspective, these are the final plans?
Yeah.
Okay.
We, we didn't understand how to be the case.
So you didn't see those?
We, we saw them, we saw them late, very late. We saw them yesterday. Um, but I spoke with Jeffrey, as I said, Jeffrey's traveling. Um, he was under the impression that they were just sketch plans. He was under the impression he would have an opportunity to confirm with Mr. Fleischer on the final set, uh, before it was approved by the planning board. So, uh, we would ask for that opportunity. The only other thing I would note is, uh, there's been a lot mentioned about safety. Uh, you know, we don't, we don't agree that this is a safe, we don't believe that, uh, you know, Menchett Road is a very quiet road. I was there for a second, this is for about an hour. I don't think I saw my car. Uh, we think, uh, it was a perfect opportunity for the students to safely walk down Menchett Road, but I guess at this juncture, we're bringing to this agreement that, I just wanted to. And that's all I have.
If, if the board decides to continue to review a draft decision?
Sure.
Would you like to have any concerns that you have on, at tonight's hearing session?
At the next hearing?
Tonight.
At tonight's hearing session?
Yeah, do you have, do you have, could you describe the concerns that you might have?
Sure.
As I put it that way.
So the concerns that we have is that we have an opportunity to review final plans and the path ends exactly where we feel we agreed, uh, yesterday. Um, I haven't had the opportunity to do that. Um, I think we would like some, uh, conditions in writing regarding the lights and the specifics. Um, and I also think we should, we would like some comments in the, in the decision specifically about the screening.
This, you, you, this is, the second time you've mentioned the screening.
Sure.
Where, where is the screening? I guess we didn't.
Well, so that's another.
There isn't any yet.
Right, right.
If needed.
If needed, yeah.
If, if needed, and, um, would, would either be along the, this side of the driveway and or across this part of property.
But I guess this goes back to our point where I'm not sure if I will see the final set.
Oh, you have. Um, I think we can, on the, on the conditions in this decision, they, you know, I, I sent them tentatively yesterday. We can fine tune them and then get them to EMI. It's just on three points, the hours on the lights, um, the screening and where it ends.
Definitely agree.
On all of those.
Boy, the light level too, I think I heard. Somebody, somebody say that the light level could be adjusted if.
Yeah.
If Mr. Fleischer was unhappy with the level.
I think your condition should say that. Yeah, we didn't hit that in the bullets that I sent them. I think that's very appropriate.
Did you have an opportunity to review the plan of the path? Not the new plan.
So.
No, you see in the tree, that's where it is.
Yeah.
And I understand that, but you got these, what, what time did you send them last night?
No, you'd like the plans.
Hey, they were, right, they, I mean, they were sent at six o'clock last night. We, we did not know they were final. Um, I think if we thought this was final.
Yeah, couldn't all of this be done between now and when we review the decision? They would have time to look at the plan between now and then. You might rewrite the decision. The decision would get sent to them before we need to approve it. So it seems like the period between now and the next meeting when we review and approve the decision would be when all of this could happen rather than having another meeting and then another meeting.
Do you meet in two weeks or a month?
Meet in three weeks because we're, we're doing the second week in July.
July 12th is our, correct. So it gives you, it gives actually longer.
I mean, the only other thing I mentioned, the lunch.
Next meeting?
What's that?
Will they be on the agenda for the next meeting?
No, we would just have approval.
For the decision.
By that time, they would have seen the decision.
I know, but it still would be on the agenda.
Yeah.
But that would be at the next meeting, not the, yeah, it would be July. So three weeks.
I guess planning time will find out.
Okay. I've spoken to Mr. Fleischer. As long as he has the opportunity to see the plan and go over it, and if he has concerns, present them to you, maybe in the form of a letter. Now, he decides.
Well, what we could do, I think, is draft the, the, the decision and then.
We can get them.
Open, open the hearing up for comments from, I wonder if he, if he has any.
I would appreciate that.
One, one thing, I may, I don't know if it shows up, will show up in your decision or not, but I guess conservation is made very clear. We know where it's going to terminate, but they want to be out there and help make sure it winds through, around the big tree. So what you see there isn't exactly where it's going to be. There, she's going to locate it on the ground with them to make sure it avoids, they want to do it too, avoids all the big trees. So there'll, there'll be undulations from what you see in, in that plan. That's essentially where it's going to be.
Well, I think we can somehow memorialize that, you know, that, that the, the plans that we're looking at are not necessarily exactly what's going to be.
Yeah.
Finally built, but then what we could require is, is, is as built plans, once the, once the construction is finished, so that we have, we have accurate plans in the file. Maybe something along those lines.
Can I ask one question with the lights? Are they, can, when they, when they dim, do all the lights dim in unison? Are they on a string? Or do you have the ability to dim individual lights?
Individually. So, can any, any, can, can a student?
No, that you have to open it up and turn it. There's settings. It's inside the fixture. Unstrued.
So it can't be done on a timer for the whole string?
Not, not.
Can't be set up on a timer?
Uh.
Or?
Yeah, that's not the way this particular.
I think.
How about they turn them off and on?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, they turn off and on.
So they'll go off on a timer that will automatically change because of, because the hours, can't, like I said.
There'll be a clock.
You might have to adjust the timer accordingly.
Good. Sorry, thank you. Uh, any other comments? And what we will do, unless the board has any reservations or would like to see any other information?
No.
We'll continue to the fourth of July to review the draft decision with the conditions that we mentioned. That, you'll have an opportunity to talk to us and express any further reservations that you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a, that's a raining, a rousing indoors, thank you.
No, I, I think it may be, you know, we, we got, we got in just a few minutes, we can go over something like the town plan report now.
You want to do that?
Are you coming back?
No, no, because I, I think I'm going to be at the private building committee for a while.
For what?
I just asked the timer. Get the bar.
So where are you?
This reminds me of, remember how we used to have to wait?
Yeah.
For a certain time?
Yeah.
There were times that we just had to sit there.
That's right. Waiting at the, at the ceiling and twirling our thumbs.
I have the first few I did, a little bit of a real big time. Um, so do you want to do town plan report right now?
Yeah, why not?
Okay.
You have ten minutes.
So is there even more soda?
Oh, my God.
And I'm like, why didn't they just think?
Yeah.
You could go home and have dinner or something.
Yeah, that's, that's what they, that's, much in short, what they said. So.
Okay.
So the biggest thing I have kind of, um, with town plan report is, um, when they have the other business is a reference for the comments for the final EIR for twelve sixty-five Maine, which. So, um, and you know what, actually, the thing about this is, we'll have to hold on a little bit, sorry, because, um, Bobby Joe's going to present on this as well.
Oh, okay.
He's not here yet.
All right.
He has, he has our final EIR. So let's just go through.
I can read it anyway.
Yeah, yeah. So let's just go through the other town plan report events. Um, just one thing to note for the public, June twenty-sixth, we start summer hours. Tom Hall will be open at eight o'clock to five o'clock. Fridays, we're going to close at two thirty. Um, we do have a, a site visit for one seventy-one Church Street coming up next week. And on June twenty-eighth, this will be of interest to people watching. We will have a site visit at Boston Properties for the forty p.m. for the office expansion back on July twelve. Um, the water master plan that we had discussed, the water conservation plan that we had, um, come up with ideas with, with the selectmen. It will be, the selectmen have nominated Harvey Bosser to be their representative to, uh, starting of the working group. So we need a representative to that. Since Tony's not here, you could all say it's Tony.
No, no, as, as it happens, I, I, before the meeting, I, I talked to Sue, and Sue would be.
Awesome.
Could be the planning or representative.
Great, thanks, Sue.
I'm into lots.
For legislative update. For legislative updates, we know that zoning reform bill is back in the, in the House and the Senate this year. It's only had one hearing yet and it's not scheduled for anything, so it's still in largely a preliminary stage, but we, you know, getting copies of it and going to read through it.
I heard there were four different bills.
I know there's two. If there's four, that's, excuse me, I'm honestly looking at the ones that NA PC is, is concentrating on as, I think they're kind of model ones. There, there are some similar ones, there are a few out there, but I don't think, I haven't really taken a look at those, so. There, another thing to consider is at the state level, they're working on some water conservation measures. I think this is just a working group at the moment. But I've reached out to, to the representative of Dyckman who's spearheading that to try and see where they are, what, what their concerns are and how we can hopefully dovetail our concerns into that.
So wait a second, over that again, so the state has a group that's working on water conservation?
Yes. Yes.
And they are. You don't know any of them or associate?
Well, I know it's, I know Representative Carolyn Dyckman is the, is spearheading it. So she's the one I've contacted, and she's the one who brought it up at the legislative conference. I don't know who her rest of her working group is yet until I hear about them.
So she'll have more.
Yes. Yes.
That's going to be important for the committee also, that I think we need, I think we're going to be asked to make suggestions as a consultant of this committee for the hire to advise it. So I think if we came prepared with some names, people, who we would suggest, I think that would be helpful.
Okay. The open space master plan is complete, if anybody wants to take a look at it, it does incorporate our changes. And other than that, that is the big things to go over with the town planner report for, for this section here.
All right.
So.
In that case, I think we're, the, the next item on the agenda, I believe, is probably Ridgeway, is it not?
Yes.
All right. For everybody who's here from the Ridgway Road hearing, I, you were here earlier, I have to go to another meeting, so I am excusing myself this evening. The hearing will be chaired by Steve Oppenheimer. And I guess you're ready to start that hearing in a department.
See you later.
Adios.
Yeah, we should probably go in the order of, since this was, the outstanding thing was the peer review, why don't we let Sam Yodas prevent, present first? And then, then Jay, and then have Dave comment on, on it after that.
Right. So, someone here from Sam Yodas?
Hi. I'm Chuck Samyos. Owner of Sam Yodas Consultants, we're civil engineers and Lance Faires, and I have with me, I'd like to bring her up because she's an integral part, Michelle Kaiserman. So basically, we have a situation where we're extremely concerned about runoff directed toward my client's home. I guess God gives us so much water. We don't mind maintaining that water, but we're a little nervous that we're going to be flooded. And we've looked at the calculations and there are a significant amount of ambiguities with the calculations. So we can go through each one of them individually. The gentleman from Jocelyn was kind enough to come up and talk to us before, saying he's working on it, cleaning things up. We got this memo literally at four o'clock. So for us to comment on it is a little difficult, but we do see an acknowledgement of a lot of ambiguities. And again, we're concerned. Runoff is a big issue in today's world, and we appreciate the opportunity to have a fair and honest review of this. I understand Mitch has reviewed it, I understand members of the town have reviewed it. I'm not sure how detailed their review has been. I'm not questioning their detail of their review, but we came up with significantly different results. And I think the results are so different that, and the ambiguities are so much, that I think they need further review. Do you want to add anything, Michelle?
No, I think that's all of it.
Okay.
Jay, you're on.
So as Mr. Samyos had mentioned, so that they had done a review, we got the letter on Thursday. I was actually out, you know, to again, so I wasn't able to get to this till over the weekend. So I, I contacted, spoke with Dave on Monday, started looking for review. We got some stuff that's been over Dave, so Dave, I don't know if Dave, I don't think Dave's been able to do a full review of everything yet. On the surface of this, there were, the, their review, there were a couple little things that we had said that, that are basically, we didn't make any change to our plans, but I provided Dave a secondary analysis using some of the changes that they requested. And it shows on the analysis that the numbers still work. That's basically the easiest way to describe it. I provided the, the sole data that was requested, which we already had, part of it was already on file with the town. The, some of the changes that, that they're talking about, there were a couple little typos on the plans. There were, I think the biggest one that they're talking about was in the, there was one change in the model, the hydro model, there was a, a subcatchment area that wasn't supposed to be there. That change, it is being a negligible change because it actually changed peak rate numbers by less than 10,000. So it doesn't, so it doesn't come up on a normal spec. So I think they did do a thorough review. I think some of their, some of their comments are a different way to model than the way we did our model. So I did take that account, did a new model, but their versions, their changes, they're, they still works. But he did take a look at that, he did some.
So can you maybe tell us what changes you made as a result of their comments and what changes that they recommend that you're not going to make because you disagree with them?
Well, it's not that we disagree with them, I think there's, there's also different ways someone's going to model everything. So I think, I think.
Let me clarify a little bit. So, so there were no physical, Jay's saying there was no physical changes to the plan. He made changes to how things were calculated and modeled. And, and to looking, doing that a different way, he's, you jump, but I characterize this wrong, but there's nothing on paper that, that changed as a result of the models. So if you want to hear about like the sheet flow and things like that, you can go through that, but that's, it's more like, you know, how, how different engineers would model different situations.
You haven't had a chance yet to review the old report, or do you have?
Not GA's changes, I still need like the HydroCAD, and I'll just need some time to go through thoroughly, you know. We, everyone's been pretty quick in getting their stuff out, and me and he, his report's about 250 pages long, so if like Mrs. Gould's consternation, they take a little time to go through it thoroughly.
May I speak? I'm the applicant.
Yeah, can, can you just wait a minute, I just want to make sure we've heard from the engineers.
Because it's super germane to what we're talking about right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if, if I may say this, one part that we feel that is extremely critical. Okay, sorry.
Well, she's, yes, yes, to talk to, to the board.
Well, over in the corner there, you can talk to everybody.
Is this okay?
Right over there, that's perfect.
Maybe I'll stand aside.
Yeah, that's good too.
I hope you're not blocking. Okay. Anyways, I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah.
I think one of the most critical parts we have is with the storage. And I think there's no allowance, if I can say that the right way, Michelle? Got to make sure that my underling keeps me in line here. Really have storage that you're filling, you're putting in a structure, but there's no compensation for the fill part of the storage. Am I right, Michelle?
So one of our.
Come up here, Michelle, so we can have you right next to me.
Michelle, I was running from Sam Yodas Consultants before. So one of our comments was in the hydrology calculations, in the existing conditions, there was a catch basin modeled with the ponding above it because it sits in a low point. That same, and then that area in the proposed is being filled in, but that storage above the catch basin is still being modeled the same way. So there, the calculations are taking credit for storage that is being filled in that's not there anymore in the proposed plans.
So when you're taking away existing storage, filling it and putting a structure, there's a delta there that isn't being compensated for. And I'm not sure, we as engineers, we can build anything with enough funds and, and area. And if we want to do detention in the middle of the Atlantic Ocean, I'm sure we'll figure out a way to do it. But in this particular case, I, I personally question whether the calcs work because of the storage. And the storage directly relates to our client. And perhaps, perhaps in a way, we are bringing something to light that could be something in the future that might be a very difficult situation for all parties.
So you feel that the storage needs to be increased?
I feel that the existing conditions is being filled. So if you're filling, it's just like if you're in a 100-year flood plain, you have to really compensate equally on all levels. So.
But the end result would be that the new basin needs to be larger than what they've designed, is that what you're saying?
It might be, it might be what, depending on what the calculations say, to compensate for storage, a larger detention system is, is possible solution. Those infiltration tanks are possible solutions, but we, we can't tell what is needed because the calculations, there's inconsistencies, so we're not getting an accurate representation of what's on the site existing.
Yeah, so they are correct with the, that there was, that was the note that I mentioned, that it was in the, in the actual process train for the actual HydroCAD, which we, that we, you guys used it as well, for the, you know, what we use to actually model the snowmower. On the original proposed conditions, the node that represented the catch basin, one of the existing catch basins for that sitting in that metal area now, was still in the proposed conditions. That was what I noted, that we, we actually have removed that, that wasn't supposed to be there. It was never intended to be part of the actual original proposed, because we don't actually use that catch basin that's filling. When we remove that from the calculations, because the, what was left behind was the flow from the subpump recharge basin to that catch basin to the catch basin down below, it, it had a negligible effect on the, on the, on the actual calculations. And I actually, I wrote that in here and I actually provided the calfs to Dave. So yeah, that's, that's been ready. They did catch it, and I'm not saying we didn't make a mistake there, but it didn't have, had no, then they had no, no way of effect on the catch basin.
Dave, anything you need to respond to?
No, I just need to go through it, you know, to mentally say, you know, we're not splitting the atom here. Something might need to get a little bit bigger, something might need to get a little bit smaller, but we're not, it's not a moonshot, so we should work through it. I had a physical comment, I actually, I mentioned Jay, but a public hearing would be the, what's our, what's our thought on like the endpoint of this, which is the dry well across the street? Can we, can we address that, its physical condition at all?
Yes. Right now, the, the existing dry well, I actually don't know how old it is. That's the final discharge point for the existing drainage system, and I believe, I think it's Maggie, the neighbor on the right, or on the east side of the property, her foundation drain goes, goes to there, so that, that dry well is capped with blue stone. It's cracked, it's, it's not the kind of cover that you want. Dave and I talked about that, you know, probably, I don't know if they, if they're able to do this, but we would, we could talk to conservation, we'll put a proper cover to that. A beehive, great cover to it, which would allow for it to really overflow, that we won't have to worry about, because right now, somebody could even block into that.
And that was kind of Mrs., it's Mrs. Taylor, right? The, that was one of her big concerns, she had issues that resulted from that previously.
She's the one who provided the photograph where there was some water.
She got water in a basement because it backed up in that, but.
Has it been maintained?
Yeah.
That would be me, and I'm still concerned about the maintenance of that dry well. If that pipe into that dry well becomes clogged, the whole, everything, all the people are talking about is completely off of that. And I haven't seen a real maintenance plan for that.
Standard conditions usually have, I think, checked twice a year if I'm not mistaken.
Well, we've been trying to figure out who's responsible for that, if it's the owner of the new house, are they really going to be interested, able or willing?
They would be obligated to.
The tricky part comes with the, the dry well is off of this property.
Right, so do we condition something offsite?
Yeah. We'd have to condition them, do we condition this property 100 Ridgway, do we want to maintain a drainage structure that's on 119 Orchard?
Do that.
Yeah. So that, that does bring up a problem, is this need, you know, an easement of some sorts to.
That seems like the obvious answer.
To make that happen. And, you know, the, the owners would have to create that easement for maintenance and agree to some kind of maintenance agreement between them.
I didn't see that in any plan.
No, it's not in any plan right now, this is a solution we have to come up with.
That's right, given the importance of the water issues, that would seem critical.
Well, I, you know, I want to be involved in that decision-making because we're sort of going with this idea that there's a water problem. I've lived there for 10 years and there is not a water problem. So before we go by Maggie's picture of snow melting, we need to really see, maybe physically go up there, that there isn't a problem.
There's a.
So I'm not agreeing to anything where there is no problem.
Everybody knows this.
There is no problem, we live there.
It's a swamp.
This is my first letter to the planning board outlining something that happened in 2010, when the road was flooded, the bottom of 119 Orchard was flooded, the cistern in the lawn at 119 was flooded, my drive. Oh, it's Maggie.
You guys should not be talking to each other, sorry.
My cistern on my side that catches my subpump drain was flooded, and my basement was flooded, all of which happened because the pipe into the dry well in the field was blocked.
And by the, by the way, this is also impressive, it's a hand job here on 80 Ridgway. It's impressive, like 10 years ago, somebody previously trying to solve the problem of the water problem on this site and creating a whole different drainage system that still didn't work. So this is now the second rep, this is candidly the, the underpinning, and Paul, you, you know, Michelle, I think you're speaking very specifically about the story, but there, there are calculations about more water coming off the site than, or coming on the site and coming off. This is a, this is a, the physical construct of the site would represent that it's actually a challenge to, to construct here. Say nothing of raising the, you know, raising the, the basin of the site five feet and not trying to really adequately compensate for that, it has an effect on everybody around.
Was Dave Conway's conclusion at the last meeting that there will be less water coming off the site because of the catch basins than there is now? Less, not more, less.
And my, my concern is honestly, if you read the review, and I, I love your guys' perspective on this, and I know the calculations can, it's all subject to modeling, and I think you have any challenges with some of the assumptions a lot, but I read the review from the Sam Yodas group, it's actually pretty concerning, foundationally concerning with the calculations that are being made in a site that we all have stor- in a site that we all historically, you know, with way more experience than, candidly, the current owners have, being around this site, know that there are a whole lot of water issues on this site. So, I read the review very carefully.
I said-
I think the Sammy Otis review was really important to go through in a very detailed way.
Which I did with John Field, the building inspector, for one hour on the phone. He told me that no increase- Yeah, no increase in volume or velocity. He said that this was a delay tactic. John Fields, the building inspector, questioned, no increase in volume and velocity, I had it quoted. Imai went over to John, John said, yes, that is what I said. So, he's an engineer.
I would really like more occasion for a dialogue between the two engineers. In my, you know, with time and the ability to actually really chat. I mean, look, I'm a fairly quantitative person. I think it really, the models underlying this really matter. Because someone may be left with a house on top of a property that, in a site that's just not, you know, structurally settled, given the water issues and the contours of the site. And I think, we, I actually think we all owe it to each other collectively to really be thoughtful about this and look at the different calculations and get to some middle ground in not particularly hurried way. So, the trouble for me is, it's hard to even look at the comments at 5:00 tonight with any degree of, you know, insight of what's changing on the, you know, on the models. And I respectfully would say that probably Dave's job, right in the town. And it'd be nice to have the engineers be able to come to a mindset of, do you need more storage, how do you deal with it? That's my respectful request.
From what I'm hearing, Dave doesn't have an adequate amount of time to review it. So, obviously, it requires a little bit more time. But the early summary that I'm hearing is that it's, your calculations seem to comport with Jay's. In terms of how the storage-
I don't, well, first off, I don't do the calculations, I just review them.
But they meet, they meet the standard that you set.
Right, so I, I think we just, we just need to review it thoroughly. I appreciate the Sammy Otis comments, I mean, I also appreciate the review. A lot of reviewers, reviews are basically how I would design it. And this wasn't the case, it was basically how, you know, how I would model it. So, it makes it less complicated because of talking about the project that presented and not the project that they want. We've got other few reviewers where that's not the case. So, I think we can work through it. Again, I don't want it to mention anyone's concerns, but yes, something might get a little bit bigger, something might get a little bit smaller, but we can work through it, is my, my feeling of it. I would ask, I know Jay's been very quick to respond, and it's been great kind of pulling this all together. I would ask one more thing of him, which is really just a, just so we're all standing on the same level.
Yep.
A recompilation of current plans, and it's really just the stuff he sent out, just so we're all looking at the same thing. That's another thing that happens a lot when we start doing this, is we get bits and pieces. Am I looking from the plan for May, or the June, and this sheet changed, and the soil map, so just-
Consolidation.
Yep.
Yeah, and it's really everything that exists now. I think, except you've got to reconfigure the hydrocath report and stuff like that.
Well, I have the one-day extension, I can, I just got to do that.
I need to back up clogs too.
Yeah.
But yeah, I don't need the verbiage read on it, you know, we're not going to, like, we're not going to grade you on grammar.
And maybe, just a suggestion I have here, I mean, I know that the storage was a principal concern, but there were other concerns, if I, you know, again, not to the layman's eye, but maybe it's worth just highlighting the other, sort of, what I interpreted. And I'm not a technical engineer, but I would put you on the spot, Michelle, and just sort of say, what are the two or three other big items? Because there was a foundation didn't drain, below the water table, there was-
Yeah, so there is other things that we were questioning in terms of how they were being modeled. Some of the infiltration tanks under the ground. One of them didn't have inverts listed, so we were, and there was no inverts on the existing drain line, so we were just concerned on how is that connecting?
Could you tell us what inverts is?
What an invert is? The elevation at which point the bottom of the pipe is coming into the system.
So, there's a pipe in the structure? Storage, yeah, storage structures, if I understand.
So, there was no, that, those elevations of where the water's coming in and coming out is important in terms of how much storage you actually have in the system. Because storage is considered under the outlet point. So, if none of those inverts are given, then you're just making the assumption that the entire tank is the storage and not what it truly is. And even how it connects into that existing system. So, we had concerns about that. The foundation drain, based on the profile with the water elevations, the bottom of the system of the foundation drain is actually sitting in groundwater. So, that storage, the amount of storage that's being modeled again is not as much because it's, you know, you can't take credit for sitting in the groundwater. We had just some concerns about the test pits and providing us just all the data for it, just to see where the groundwater is and the soil types, just for, to make sure that the infiltration rates are modeled correctly for the recharge. There was some, we had questions on, in hydrocath, one of the pipes is modeled, it was modeled as six-inch on the plants, called out as eight-inch, just to kind of consistency sake, to model what's actually on-site for existing and proposed for consistency. There's, there's one catchment area, number nine, that isn't being connected to the point of analysis. And I believe you mentioned that it's just there for the areas to be consistent. But if it's being, if it's meant as a well or something, then it should connect to a pond to show that if it does overtop, that water does go somewhere, so it should go to the point of analysis. And, but if, if it's routed to a pond and it, the pond holds all of that stormwater, then there'll be zero runoff and it just does the same, the intent is the same. But if it actually does overtop in a larger storm, then that water is leaving the site, but it's not being accounted for in that proposed model. And there's, we had recommendations about the O and M plan. And then there was some other kind of maintenance. We're, again, with the storage and just how things are modeled, we had some concerns about. But it's just, the site may work, but we just want to make sure that the calculations are actually modeling what the plans are showing to be able to correctly evaluate that as well.
Or perhaps, to make it work, the impervious area has to be reduced?
Or storage increase.
Storage increase, so that would mean, I guess, that's not my position. I appreciate, is this the town engineer?
No, they're consulting.
Oh, okay, from NICH?
Yep.
Okay. Great. So, we would appreciate being involved in the process as it goes through, I think.
Maybe I should just hire you.
Well, if you-
Should I switch engineers at this point?
If you hired me and I came back and I said it didn't work, how would you feel?
Well, I would ask Dave, he's the town expert consultant that I've paid.
So, we should probably stick through the chair.
Oh, we're not going to take Dave's place, nor do we want to take the engineer's place.
Okay.
They're both good guys and they deserve to stay where they are. And we're staying where we are as consultants to the abutters.
Okay, so, Dave, I think we're really going to be counting on you to mediate, if you will, where there's a disagreement between the two engineers and to come up with your own conclusion-
Right.
-on these points. In your opinion, who is correct? Maybe they're both correct, but they're just different interpretations. So, we're really going to count on your response to this.
Yeah, we've, we've done this before, so.
Yeah.
And, you know, what we'll typically do is probably like, maybe a, like, I think the next go-around will probably address some of the issues, and then we can talk, probably just through a conference call, like maybe the remaining. Because you'll never get, we'll never get the total agreement, but, you know, sometimes it's, this is a goal that I question.
Yeah, as a layperson, do I understand that models, in other words, different engineers choose the model that they wish to accomplish a goal? You choose one, he chooses another. Is that, is that the understanding of a model? As a layperson, is that what you would call it?
So-
So, a way of going about a problem?
So, there's, there's a general, there's a generally accepted way of putting, putting, putting together a model for a-
And you may choose one, and he may choose another.
No, they're all basically the same framework.
But they keep referring to the model, and I just wondered if that, he chooses one, and he's the town engineer, and that's the model he chose.
The model is pretty consistent, it's done-
But you did refer to it a number of times, that the model wasn't right.
Absolutely, but the model has to also be inputted properly.
Yeah, okay.
If you don't input things properly, or if there are things that go askew, and I'm not saying that Jillson purposely did anything or stuff, like, we're all human. You know, we leave stuff, very rarely do we leave stuff off, but there's been occasions to.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify the meaning of that, that's all.
But when we're looking at something, and I appreciate your comments almost at the beginning that said that we went about it, basically what you were saying in a professional way, and not trying to do things astray. I think that what we need to do, and what we appreciate, is an opportunity to make sure that it works. That's all we're asking for.
No, you're not, you're looking for dragging, so.
I think, I think-
Can I say something?
By the way, just a minute.
One thing?
Just a minute, please. Because, especially because people haven't identified themselves, everyone needs to make sure that you, if you haven't signed in already, that you do sign in before you leave. So, please identify yourself and then proceed.
All right, I'm Dana Gould, I'm the owner of 119 Orchard Avenue. And I am attempting to develop 100 Ridgeway under scenic road review. So, I've been complying with and going through all the steps that has been required, and learning a lot in this process. I was told that even though the town has an expert, Dave Conway, that reviews my guy's work, and said that it was satisfactory that the Joneses would then be allowed to do a peer review, which they have. Which I don't understand, but who am I? So, I took this peer review and sat with John Field, the building inspector, and he essentially said to me, there is absolutely no abutter impact, and these are all housekeeping issues, and this is essentially a delay tactic. So, I don't know why John would be motivated to say that, but that is what he said to me. And that is all I have to say.
Okay, well, John Field is not the engineer on this project, so, you know, he can express his opinion, but I don't think that it really carries so much weight.
Okay.
So, but I appreciate you telling us.
One last thing, not, just because I just want to make sure we get to like the next meeting and we don't, like, because we've been talking about this so much. Are we all set with like the non-stormwater stuff, like the lights, the plantings, the architecture? You know, like, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to-
You're saying that's because we got all the oxygen in the room, is that correct?
Right, I just don't want to forget about any of that stuff. And I don't remember, like, I don't know what the last homework was.
Just hold on. Were there any other issues that you were coming back for? You had asked me to come back before, because-
No, we did, we did. There was a request, we wrote a, like in Dan Jones's 80 Ridgeway, we wrote a letter in the first, in the last planning board meeting. And the request was to reformat Imai, write the letter along the charter, the terms of the charters of the planning. And we did that, we submitted that, and maybe it's worth just reading that into the record.
Yeah, we'll have to get to that, to that too, as well. But then, as far as like landscape, they've done-
Yes.
Yeah. Karen has made changes that Kim is satisfied with. I don't recall there being any issues with the architecture or otherwise with that, so. And really, I think the changes were increasing the height of some of the trees along the edges.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Hugh Jones, Dan's father, I also live in Ridgway. And I have a question, Dave, I heard you say something, and of course, I too am not an engineer, but I think I heard you say, Dave, that we may not get to complete agreement on this. And to Dana's point, it seems to me that what the objective, whoever we are, wherever our perspective, the objective is just to make sure that this project works. And when I hear you say, Dave, we may not get to complete agreement, am I naive to think that thoughtful, smart engineers with mediation can't come to a complete agreement and say, this is it, this works? Because, just to finish, if it doesn't work, to coin the pun, we're all high and dry. But the owners of the new property will know it doesn't work. And Maggie Taylor's basement will know it doesn't work. And so, I too, as a layperson, am a little bit concerned about different models. And the question is, can we, can our objective be that the engineers reach a complete consensus on what's appropriate?
And similarly, with such site disturbance, five feet of fill, we don't know what else won't work. I mean, if this were not as robust a set of change to the landscape, I think it would be a reasonably easy exercise. Candidly, what we're asking for is with such dramatic change in the landscape, you know, five feet of fill, and, you know, and all sorts of shifting around, new catch basins affecting old existing infrastructure, that we're not totally clear what the dry well capacity looks like in the field, it just feels to me like this should be particularly thoughtful and well-planned. And because we're all anxious, having lived candidly around the property for, you know, 40-plus years, and seen all of the drainage iterations and challenges that have existed, and candidly, multiple attempts to address it on this same property, that haven't worked for previous owners than Dana and Janet.
80 Ridgeway is an 8,800 square foot home with a pool that was built minus scenic overview because they kept one panel of the thing. And it's, it's a huge house, and I listened to it getting built for two years, and he's my neighbor. So, I don't know what he's talking about, I really don't.
Okay.
But it certainly isn't fair.
So, a little bit of a jump from three engineers not being agreed to complete failure. I didn't mean to insinuate, but I would defy any three people to come to complete agreement on anything. So, we will, we will come to a general consensus. At the end of the day, everyone's going to be unhappy. It's the only guarantee I can make.
That's the definition of compromise?
That doesn't sound too promising to me.
I, 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 you know something, I really, I beg to differ. Because these modeling programs have been worked over for years. They're, we use it, we use the same one, okay? You use the same one, okay? So, it's how we implement it. But there are basic, who was the Greek that went in the tub and the water went up? Archimedes, thank you, I should know that, I'm Greek. But, you know, you put fill in the tub, you don't have as much water. The water's going to spill out. Where's it going to go? That's storage area, we all know that. So, let's really say that we can come, are we going to be able to dot the i and cross the t? No, but there are general, general designs that we can all agree on. And those designs are to not fill the tub and to not have an impact on the abutters. Because like I said on my opening statement, God gave us, God gave the Joneses a certain amount of water. They should get that same water, but no more.
They're uphill from here.
Do they live uphill?
It doesn't matter, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, for whoever it is, it is.
Do the board members have anything else you want to say?
I think I remember, Dave, you're saying, it is a fish hole, but it's easier to calculate based on the geometry. The basic metrics of, you have to capture the water, you have to hold the water, and then you have to- to hold the water and then you have to release the water slowly. That's the general, the idea of stormwater management, is how I understand.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's as both, as complicated as it gets and salaries reflect that.
The question is, there's a certain degree of quantity of water, there are some coefficients that we're talking about that may be within the realm of interpretation, but at the end, the type of software you're using, the inputs are giving you something that it is in a model, in the real world, that model might differ slightly.
And a lot, sometimes a lot of it is, you know, there's ranges, right? You can, you can use different ranges for different variables and then some people say, oh, you should use this rate, this, you know, this number and that. And so at a certain point, you know, he does it one way, this guy does it another way. Well, you're modeling the existing and the proposed, if you're just, are consistent, then usually those things wash out. That's what I see a lot. Like, you know, a lot, a lot of times it's like, you know, we use, you know, we use X and you should be using Y. Well, you're going to use Y in both cases and so it doesn't, you know, those two changes will wash out. So, well, we will get to the point where I am comfortable, I, I believe, that, you know, the plan as proposed will work. I, I cannot speak for other people, I cannot guarantee that, you know, Mr. Sami Otis will be happy with, you know, the conclusions, I can't tell you. Jay will be happy with the conclusions. I mean, probably, my best guarantee would be that they're not happy with, you know, there's, there's a, you know, modicum of disappointment. I would, I would love for everyone to come to complete agreement, but, you know, I've been doing this here for quite some time with, you know, neighbors hiring pay reviewers and, you know, we get to maybe a point of diminishing returns, but we never really get to a point where they're like.
Incomplete agreement.
Incomplete agreement.
Yeah. Let me ask another question. Steve brought up the issue of, we are doing calculations, the engineers are doing calculations about site conditions on the site. And sometimes the geometry, like in this case where it's a fishbowl, warrants potentially looking beyond the site. And one of the questions we had was to what extent water might not be calculated, but it would be collected on site. I guess that's.
That was revision 1A.
Okay, so that was accounted for?
It was.
That was, yeah, that was after we, after the site wash?
Yeah, it was, well, it was at the first hearing, but we did, we did check our, we did, we went out the street and, yes, the sub area we showed originally is the same sub area that we show now. We get the flow from the up, you know, the neighborhood up top, we get some flow that comes off their driveway that goes down, doesn't get onto actually Ridgeway.
So they understand the calculation, Jay? How deep into the property are you talking about?
So we, if you're looking from our project side up, it goes on to their, their property towards the driveway section. Part of that house sheds towards us, some of the, the refrains come towards us, some of their driveway comes down and discharges just before Ridgeway, so it doesn't get into the berm. It actually comes, it gets behind the berm and then comes down, along Ridgeway, then drops down, so there's a good amount of that property that's followed on to ours. Most, the rest of Ridgeway is all, all guttered with the berm. It goes all the way down to a catch base that's in front of the Joneses. But the, well, I just wanted to make one quick note was that, what Mr. Sami Otis said and I would be one percent, full agreement with him, this is a fishbowl. Last thing you want to do is fill it. The problem is, the thing is with this fishbowl, it already drains, it's got two catch bases. So that's why the change over of filling this section, filling it up and then having the water shut off, it's getting, it's, it's, it's almost a sun mirror itself because that water automatically drains anyway, doesn't have to fill up to the low point, well, the high water then caress. So, yeah, I think you guys have gotten into that, a similar situation on, not a book before, I think Metro West had done the design where the backside of the property had that giant low point that was catching a lot of water and they had to elongate that, create a new, basically base from the back to have to do that. That was never, that was never naturally drained, it would just had to fill up and eventually go over the driveway. So that would be the same case here if these weren't actually artificially drained by the catch bases. So because they are, that's how, that's how we have the ability to do what we're doing.
The one thing that I kind of, and I'm going to speak and paraphrase now, which is sometimes the magic works with all of our calculations and the models and all the different things and then other times, for no reason, it seems like it doesn't work. And we have, you know, freezing sheets of water on the road, we have basements which are suddenly wet, which never were, even though everything works out mathematically in the model, it still has a huge impact. So I would really like it that this is so over-engineered that that doesn't happen there. I surely would hate to be feeding our words.
Right, yeah. No, I, I.
Fail class.
I, you know, I, the one point I do disagree with Dave, I think, I think we can come to an agreement, I don't see why, we all want the same thing, we all want the site to work, so I think.
Because you're not as old as me.
You're still not as old as me there.
But I'm older than you, Dave.
But I think that's the thing.
I, I would just say one point to this point that Jay, it's already has catch bases. One of the points that I think I saw in here was assumptions about soil types. Assumptions were made that is the optimal soil for runoff, for saturation. And that, that to me is again, one point where I just try to be careful to take the assumption of the actual type of soil on the property. Because we know that we've seen this property get, you know, get addressed before in the past, so to this point, I would just ask that you be, you know, appropriately thoughtful and conservative and use the right assumptions when we're looking at all these different models.
I can, I was going to say real quick, you didn't have the opportunity to take a look at the, the stuff I sent him, either to the Joneses. So there was, um, there was a bunch of witness soil testing on site for both Dana's property and 119 and our 100 Ridgeway. We also did some test holes or when the forage was excavated, we dug down about six and a half, seven feet down to see what material was there. On site is all the moment samples. So that's, that's, that was, we had that data, you guys didn't have that data. That's why we were using the 2.4 loading rig.
But I think that you mentioned to me in a sidebar conversation outside that you would be, and I really cringed, but I didn't say anything, you mentioned that you would be going out to the site and checking it and doing soil tests after the approval and during construction. I, I, I was like, I was floored by that.
Well, you, we do it because.
How do you do a design and you say, I'm going to check the soil with soil tests during construction? I don't, I've never run into that, but, you know, maybe there are wiser people out there than me.
I wouldn't say that they're wiser people, but I can say that anybody who goes out there and doesn't actually check what's, what's below the system isn't really doing a good job for the actual construction of that system. So the point is, and we have the notes and the plans, that after, you know, we've done it, we've done a soil testing through the top of the property, through the center of the property, all the way down to, to 119. So there's plenty of soil data that shows what soil is consistent there.
You can't, you can't model that and, and then say that the absorption rate is X, Y, or Z and they go on. So we, let's go on to another subject, I guess, but that's something of contention that we do have.
So that, that goes to, we're going to recompile all the data so that we're not, you know, pulling the plan from this or the sheet from that or the, this date and such and such. We're going to look at it fresh, make sure everything's, all the I's are dotted, T's are crossed.
Okay, so when are we going to continue this hearing to?
Well, we had it on, I had this on for July 12th, so there's not enough time to get through this. That's what I would ask the engineer to.
Three weeks?
Dave, is that enough time for you?
Okay.
So when will we be getting, when will we be getting stuff and you will be getting stuff to really review? I mean, obviously, and, and, I know, we're all in the same boat here, summertime, vacations and also just full plate.
Yeah, I'm not in that boat. I'm actually in the boat of getting this done. Seriously, I'm in the getting done boat.
I just want to get in the same boat of getting it done properly.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with you, I'm on your side.
So three weeks, July 12th?
Three weeks, July 12th.
And we would get stuff a week before?
Before July, you should get it before that.
Oh, okay, very cool.
So what's the date for submission between you two? Have you got a date?
Yeah, we don't want to have anything the day before.
Yeah, so we've got July 4th.
Yeah, I see, two weeks.
So first assignment, it seems like Gilson has to get a newly compiled set out to everybody, right?
Yeah, could you do it by next Wednesday?
I can set out a compiled set tomorrow.
Yeah, you can do that by Friday. Let's just take, take a day, make sure everything's in there and it's, and then, and then, you know, how this is going to work is we're going to review it again in the context of the Sami Otis comments. He also has a response letter, which we'll look at. You guys will get the materials at the same time.
Yep.
And then sometime, uh, next week, us three should talk. I mean, towards the end of the week, I think should be fine.
I'll be on vacation, but I am more than happy to help you out with your schedule. Michelle and I will be on a conference call, I'll do that for vacation. But we are getting the counts too, am I right? Full cat counts, the whole shebang.
Yep.
Okay.
So Sami Otis gets your conclusions by July 30th?
Yeah, right? I mean, June, yes, June 30th.
Okay, and then you need at least a week to review, because that is the holiday week. You get it by June 30th and you can, you can have, you're done by July 7th. So everybody can hear, because I'm sure you're going to have comments.
Oh, we're closed, we're third and fourth, so.
Wait, third and the fourth?
Yeah.
Right.
We're closed, so.
What's that?
Do you want to come through?
I do.
I mean, I thought.
So, you're waiting.
So by the, the 23rd, Jay will send out, do everything.
Right.
By the 30th.
We'll review it.
And the three of us will have talks.
And then so we'll submit comments.
And then.
By the 7th, July, you'll make comments. Yeah.
And send it to.
You.
And then to the abutters so that everyone will have a chance to see this before our next meeting on the 12th.
Perhaps to the applicant.
So once, once things come into me, any of these, I've sent them out to all, everybody else. Yeah.
Okay, so that only gives you like the weekend and the 10th and 11th.
Sounds like it's a very doable.
Okay, so everybody.
You're puzzled. Yeah, she, I, yeah, we have a week to review it.
Yeah.
Then we have another week to like write a letter.
A week to review and all, and actually three days, right? Because we have the holiday.
Yeah.
July 4th. So we have a, a week to review, but then we have three days to come to, to a conclusion?
That sounds short.
That sounds short to me.
The other option is have it ready to go by July 26th?
Well, my math isn't quite working, it's three weeks before our next meeting.
Right, and next meeting is the 12th.
July 12th.
Yeah.
Here we are.
Yeah.
On Wednesday, two Wednesdays, three Wednesdays, but there is this big long holiday weekend in there that kind of.
Correct, the holidays and, and, and really.
I don't think things have to necessarily be completely resolved, it's just enough so that there's an iteration of your analysis, Dave.
Yep.
Your rebuttal to the analysis and if there might be iterations after that, but at least we have a first pass of what it is, I'd like to see that on the 12th.
I mean, I, I think we can take a good bite out of it at the very, very least. So, you know, I, I would continue to push this forward.
All right.
There's one other issue and that is the outside maintenance of the dry well, that we have to get resolved as well.
Yeah, we have to get that issue resolved.
And then we're going to talk to conservation about maybe replacing the cracked limestone in the field. It's a bit on the hammers.
I think there would also have to be an evaluation of the dry well and stuff, I haven't seen it, but how, what was the dry well, do you have an idea?
I think it was probably part of the original waterworks that were on the Hubbard State, which were put in about 1884.
1884.
Well, that's a lot of logic.
Um, I question.
Let's get them all in.
How a reaching catch basin can work for that long? Unless there's never been any sanding or something or anything like that.
It's a private rock and it's worked quite well. We have beautiful flowers and bird feeders and everything over there.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
I wish you all would come for sight because we'll just see this.
I'm sure it's, I'm sure it's beautiful, but quite honestly, we want to make sure that it infiltrates properly.
It does.
Well, we'd like a professional, like he's going to review.
I think, I think Dan should read his into the record. Dan Jones should read his into the record.
Excuse me, Kim.
Can we release these guys if, if we're done with the engineering topic? I'm just consciously, you know.
Chuck, you should, want to hang around?
Actually, we'll stay on our own time.
Wonderful.
Okay, no problem.
We're enjoying the evening.
And I should clarify, while we're contracting with Chuck, the, the contract is on behalf of all butters.
Okay.
Oh, good, it's in split, then.
Okay, so I will read this, this line I said. To the members of the, of the Weston Planning Board, as a butters to the proposed 100 Ridgeway Road construction project and longtime residents at 80 Ridgeway Road, we submitted a letter to the planning board dated April 11, 2017, expressing our initial concerns about the project. Having since reviewed specific standards and criteria applicable to the planning board review, we respectfully submit, for the board's consideration, at its meeting on Wednesday evening, June 1st, the following additional comments regarding the subject listed below. Water and drainage. Because we had concerns about plans prepared for the site on the Gilson, by the Gilson Company on behalf of the owner, Dana Gould, we engaged Sami Otis consultants to conduct a peer review of those plans. Our review was submitted to the planning board under a letter from Sami Otis dated June 14th. And we have had several communications with EMI, the town planner, and NAGREGARD. We understand that the Gilson Company and David Conway, the planning board's consulting engineer, have received copies of the Sami Otis review, but we do not know their response. Chuck Sami Otis will be attending your hearing on Wednesday evening and we leave it to the engineers and EMI to resolve the planning board satisfaction, the issues raised by the Sami Otis review. From our perspective, however, the review seems to reveal some fundamental flaws in the Gilson plans, for example, incorrect assumptions in instances where plans and calculations do not match and calculations by Gilson with respect to water exiting the property before and after proposed construction. We are also curious why none of the problems in the Gilson plans identified to the Sami Otis review were spotted by Mr. Conway when he reviewed and reportedly approved the Gilson plans on behalf of the planning board. With the quote unquote bowl configuration of the site and the dramatic drop in grade from Ridgeway Road, the proposed site has long had considerable water problems. In fact, a substantial subterranean drainage system installed by the Vinghams, who owned the property before Mr. Gould, apparently did not solve the problem. And that was before construction of a large new house now proposed, which will substantially increase the amount of water to be used on and discharged from the property in question. Vehicular and pedestrian safety. For many years, the right of way from Ridgeway Road to 119 Orchard Ave. has rarely been used by motor vehicles. Currently, that portion of the right of way of on, on or abutting the driveway into 80 Ridgeway Road is used by our young children, 11, 9, 7, and 5-year-olds for biking and playing, for pickups and drop-offs by the Weston School bus. Use of that way as a driveway to a large house could change things dramatically and at the least will require a formal agreement between abutting owners with respect to the cost and responsibilities for snow plowing and response to maintenance for safety purposes. We ask that at least during construction, Orchard Ave. be used for access to the site by construction equipment, trucks and all other vehicles. Site disturbance. To address water and drainage issues, it is proposed that the construction site be elevated as much as four feet, which will obviously change the site dramatically. An historic forage or outbuilding on the property has already been demolished and a large footprint of the proposed house will reduce much of the open space that has long offered a delightful view from Ridgeway Road designated as one of our town scenic roads. Vegetative buffer zone and lighting layer. The builder will remove trees now on the site, but has promised to replace them with extensive planting and a vegetative buffer zone. That will be important and we hope that it works. Nevertheless, with the increased elevation of the proposed new house, we are concerned that the new structure will cast off a great deal of nighttime layer, even if dark sky and downlights are used for the new house during construction. Conclusion, we thank the planning board for considering our concerns and hope that thoughtful and respectful dialogue will resolve these issues to everyone's mutual satisfaction. But respectfully submitted, Dana G. Jones, Paula A. Jones and Q. R. Jones, Jr.
Thank you.
Dana, do you want to read yours?
I don't think so, because I think it's really geared towards the board. I don't think it's, it's everything we've really discussed.
Okay.
Hey.
Thank you, Barry.
May I ask for one minute?
May I ask for one minute to speak to my client, because something's come to my attention, I think may be relevant here? I'd like to speak to him privately. Is that be okay? I know it's out of the realm of...
But do you wanna then come back in and speak?
Yes.
Because we're ready to close, we're ready to talk.
Right, we will come back in and either address the issue, or...
Or, or wait until the...
One minute.
One minute. Thank you. Okay, I appreciate your time, we are all set for now, if we agree on something you can add.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your in-depth work, for your intelligence.
Nice, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
So the next time on the agenda is 334 Wellsley Street?
I don't, I don't, I don't know there's, there's any handling.
No, there isn't, can't argue with her.
What are you doing? Good chat, Sami Otis.
Dave Conway.
Give my best to Judy.
Yep.
Who's the loving lady. Do you know Tom Chatton?
Yeah.
Hi, everybody.
Professor, Director, Sir.
That's awesome, he's a good man.
Yeah, I met a couple of your Worcester guys, too. What's their names, Mr. Surveyors?
No, we, a couple of crews out there, I'm not sure, like the survey guys.
Well, thank you, please give my best to Judy.
Sure.
This is early.
Good luck, everybody, engineering types.
Come to an agreement.
Yes.
Leave. Okay.
Hi, my name's Timothy Burke, I'm the architect, and thank you very much for this opportunity to present this project.
And you might say that this, we get the sidewalk back in the woodwork.
That is correct, yeah.
Which is why, yeah.
Chilly day.
Yeah. And I know, my gosh.
Now, it's the first day of summer.
Right, yeah, how perfect.
So the, um, this, uh...
Excuse me for a minute. Dave, and... Dave, can you ask her to stop talking for a second?
I, I can, but I don't think she will.
Excuse me?
We get them, we're moving on to the next area.
Yeah, you could ask me.
Thank you. Go ahead. Sorry.
So, um, this, um, property, the, the site plan was originally approved in 2010, and at the time of that, we had a, a pool located here, a pool house, and a swimming pool. And as the owners have lived in the house and really enjoyed the property, and they've taken very good care of it, the, they've realized that where that original location of the pool is not that convenient, so what we're seeking approval, one of the things, is to relocate the pool to right here. So it'll be closer to the kitchen and the, and the mudroom and the areas that, you know, for the kids to use, and be much more convenient.
Is that, other pool already exists?
No, we never thought of the pool, right. So we're ready to do that, and, um...
Just a different location?
Different location, yeah. A couple of other things that we're seeking to modify the original proposal, we are now showing the, some chain link fencing here, there's existing fencing along a portion of this that we tie into, to create the protection for the pool area for the, for some pools. Also, we have a problem where people, because since we're near the intersection, people often use his driveway to turn around, so we would like to do, install the gates that were originally approved right at this location here. During the site visit, we had talked about moving them back a little, which we've done, based on those comments. The, I've also, at, at the request, I've added drawings that show the, this is a legend, there's the original plantings, the ones that were done in 2010, and then the green ones are the ones that are proposed to be added, and the blue were ones that had died and we've replaced. And I think the owners have actually put in more than originally asked for, just because they, too, appreciate the screening along Wellsley Street.
Let me tell you, I appreciate that little graph you've got going, I mean, to show...
Trying to make this clear.
Yeah, nobody does that, so thank you so much.
I, I did make a mistake, I should have put in the caliper of the plants as we would actually plant them, so I can augment that, I put in the sizes of that they would eventually grow, too, but that could be a little while before that happens. So I can update that for the Planning Board. And the fence, that's the main thing. Oh, yes, the other big thing was on, the neighborhood here on this property on South, they pretty much clear-cut their backyard, and so we went from having a fairly well-screened property to suddenly being widely exposed, and it's a, a serious safety concern for the owners. So we are proposing an eight-foot-high fence along this section here to provide screening, an eight-foot-high... That is correct, we went and measured, and we've actually put up a temporary stream just to maintain the privacy, but...
Because of the way the landscape is, it, it goes down this way, so, and the house is up. So what happens is, if you put like a six-foot fence, it's like really low, then they put trees through the house, into our living room. So, it's a concern, so it's a concern till we have a sun, who's home, all that. They, they clear, just so you know, they cleared up 40 feet of trees, 40 feet if clearing was done.
There's a buffer between their property and yours, 14, 14, 10?
40 feet, and it just...
Could take down a lot of trees.
And the problem is now, we can see across South Avenue, and, and you can see from South Avenue into the house.
The natural buffer is...
Is gone, and, and 40 feet is like this, and then there is the, the width of it, too.
Yeah, it's pretty much the whole, the whole area here.
It's gone.
Doesn't that make the fence a structure?
It does.
So you're gonna go to the CBA?
Oh, we need us. Is it the quality of the, the land that's causing, otherwise there was no need for us to do that.
Yes, we don't go on the sidewalk. Oh, okay, what they say is right. Because when you stood in the backyard, it was like, wow, straight through to, it's not people there. Payoff, it's a woman, I think, I lost, we're just looking at both of them. So they're, you're, way up here, from the, the hill, they're coming down, and you now pull it back, just part of it, you see something else, and they have done a very nice job. It's awful, but it, it blew me, when you're seeing it from a straight through. Same is one side to me with privacy, you, you, you lost all your privacy.
We lost all our privacy, and not just with them, the, the butter, two of them as well, so there are three houses on South Avenue.
Yeah.
Me, and two.
Yeah. Because there are these tall things, that's all the other story that's gone, as I recall, as I probably remember.
What fence is it gonna look like, the materials?
It's gonna be a solid wood board fence.
This has to be a, a wood fence.
It's not the entire length, I don't think.
No, no.
It's just a short segment to block this view.
There is already a wooden fence, half of the property, which, which is done by, he has it.
This point to this side.
That's the new fence?
Yeah, this is an existing fence that is already there, which is a wooden fence by this neighbor. We'll be adding, beyond the...
So you're not adding any end story here?
There is quite a bit of existing, I'm sure.
But I thought you said there wasn't any?
On their property.
They're, you know, this way.
40 feet.
But you think that this is a hill that goes up?
Is this going in the proper direction, or that's going toward the... That's going in the proper direction?
Yeah.
Is that south lab in the...
Yeah, so that, that was the back, because we took a picture of your screen when we were out there.
Yeah. So this is, is that going to itself?
No, this is the existing, this is the other fence, this is the existing fence by the neighbor. What you need to...
We're gonna turn the lights down, because I can't see. Thanks, Emma.
That's, that's the...
And we took the pictures up front, because that was a concern about where the gate line was.
Yeah, but this is not yet, this is not the, this is the, existing fence for the neighbor, that doesn't, that's not existing.
I wish I had pictures.
Yeah, I wish I could, if, if you want, I can send the pictures, I don't have a problem.
Or you're welcome to visit.
We did.
So, anything else you want to present, what about lumens for the pool and the pool house?
Yes, I had provided the total incandescent wattage equivalent, it comes to 1594, but I can't provide the lumens.
Yeah, well, only the lumens are, and then we need to know what the existing lumens are, and therefore the total lumens on the site.
Yeah, this is total, this is all the lighting.
That's, that's all included.
These are the new ones, and these are the existing.
So, yeah, we'll need to, you know, what that number is in the lumens, because...
I can provide that.
Are you adding a generator or anything else?
We already have an existing approved generator, but we're not putting it in.
There is one more I have, was solar panels, that's shown here, on this section here.
Solar panels? On site amendment?
Yeah.
I thought so.
Wait.
Don't go by my memory.
So, was, was the prior pool or pool house already approved and written up, and is it gonna be an amendment to that?
It's to change in location, exactly.
Approved and never built, and therefore, it's a change in the original site plan, because it's not, they're all not positioned in the same place anymore.
So is this going to be a memo, or a whole new...
That's, that's enough, where it looks like, because it's gonna have to be recorded in the site plan, yeah? Yeah, I think, yeah, this is a decision. Okay.
So, I mean, one of the things is just a spec on the fence again, so the, so just to review, the, the left side fence, we should say, the north side fence, you're talking about on this side, sorry, for not the pool, right? You have the fence that's being fenced.
This is here, it's a four-foot-high vinyl coated black chain link. And it, and it's a fairly tight wood mesh that's required by the pool.
And so will it have a top bar, or not?
It needs a top bar, or I think for the, for the issue.
I thought we usually know...
For a pool fence, though, yeah, I don't think it's, I don't think it's different than...
And also, this is sort of around the pool in the back.
So it runs from the house over here to this, there's an existing chain link fence.
There's already an existing chain, so it's not...
Yeah, I agree, I understand.
And then the wooden fence, do you have a detail for that, what's going to...
Yeah, that would be interesting to see.
I'm gonna provide it, it's gonna match the, the fence that's here now.
Are they vertical, or...
Yeah, vertical.
Natural, green.
We'd wanna know all that.
Because that house that's there, leaves the neighbor on the corner has that type of fence, yeah.
And raps.
That color, that green, right, you go by there all the time.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I missed the sidewalk.
Do you, you all have to give the comments to me?
No, I'm just like, congratulations, I'm finally getting in here now that it's summer, I might get to use this by next year.
May I just confirm, so an eight-foot-high fence is proposed at the rear, as well as on the, on the right side? Just on one side?
It's on the, it's on the south side.
Right there.
Just on that side, okay. So then the fence across the rear says six feet.
The back, and the back is a chain link, it's not the wooden, wooden is only on one side, for protection.
That is a feat as well, like, on the back.
It is a feat, is that an existing fence?
It is, it's proposed.
Okay.
That's not a...
See, see, this is existing here, so, so we gotta, we basically tying the chain link into that, and this does not need the, because all this is wooded area anyway. We don't even go here, this is up there, but because of the pool, we gotta, either we have to put, put a fence right here, according to jointly, or we fence the pool.
The whole backyard.
That's what you see.
And we have had trouble with coyotes.
Coyotes and, and deer all the time.
So they, they actually killed a deer in our backyard, the coyotes, and they were dragging the body and everything. It was very, it was, this is, is whole this area in here, it's conservation land.
There's a trail.
There's a trail here, that's all.
There's a jungle out there.
It is a jungle.
So it looks like the, the things turning then are, in terms of lighting, what the, what's it gonna be, seeing exactly, a spec on fence.
And we, or it looks like you have the cuts on the lights?
Yes.
These have all been submitted. And they're all dark, sky compliant, et cetera.
These were actually submitted in the original plan, and, and, and only one of the fixtures, they don't make it anymore, so they, they brought it to LED, that's the only change.
All lights have changed to LED.
Everything else is same.
Did this entire house go under, under view originally?
And she was very helpful at that time. Susan Haber used to be the, Susan Haber was here, and...
He's been such a nice guy.
Okay, so, thank you very much, so, when do we continue this, too?
Is this a July 12th, do you need to push this out to 26?
For a decision?
Yeah.
For, so, in other words...
Do the decision on that day, but, yeah, they'll have to have everything to us, you know, at least a week prior, so we can write the decision, including the updated landscaping plan, with the tree sizes noted, as in, have our landscaping consultant review it.
When are we going to see, like, the fence and the total amount of lumens at the next year?
Yeah, we would see that and then do the decision, okay?
Second, September 12th, July 12th.
Congratulations on replacing the dead trees, and a more meaningful decision, and also having it memorialized on the plan, so, awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Sorry about the words.
I'm sure it was entertaining, though. It was interesting to see.
It's so much better than none of our neighbors did have. We had to put, and Dave Conway was the consultant even at that time, and thankfully, all our, our engineers had very politely...
Congratulations. Good night, thank you. So now we have these two decisions, 29 and 27.
We have the two decisions, yeah.
23, 27, Boston Post Room.
Yep.
Don't we have more than that, don't we?
Well, yeah, we do have, yeah, we have...
You comment on the EIR.
My next?
I think, I, Steve was, you have to, you have to talk to Steve, please.
Wait, so do we do, do we do the EIR, and then we do the two decisions?
Up to you, that's, that's your choice, well, we have them in order, I've counted on them, we would do decisions first, well, we can do the, if we want to do the EIR, so, let's all... Okay.
We're ready for it.
Okay.
Meeting Board Members, for the Robert Robert B. Show, IDM Transportation Consultants.
Thank you.
We've been engaged to take a look at the final EIR for the Paul Warren Campus, 1265 Masons, Wallham. And we understand that the town need to be in a position of comments to MIBA as part of that filing by, I believe, the 23rd. We were engaged to look at that and provide input relative to our initial review of the draft EIR, which was published, and then provide a basis for initial comment by the town on that document. We place specific emphasis on aspects of the final EIR that attempt to respond to those initial comments. And in particular, while the EIR is a rather thick, voluminous document, the focus of the review is, of course, from the perspective of Weston and Western roadways, not so much other aspects of that filing that might be appropriate for our mental reasons, but are of subject purview by the town. So in, in that line of, of context, we've found that the final EIR, in fact, it does provide supplemental analyses that, independent of what we know to be constraints, regional constraints, 128 in particular, provide sufficient infrastructure on the Wallham side of the line, and within the interchange itself, to support what they're proposing to do. And they've, they've provided advanced modeling that would demonstrate how that will work, and we concur, generally concur with those findings. The principal concern that we have is that, taken on its own, and independent of 128, there, there are realities that affect Western roadways. We've said this in many prior reviews, not only for that project, but for other projects like 133 Boston Post Road, and... but for other projects like one thirty-three Boston Post Road, for instance, that there are constraints on one twenty-eight that force local cut-through for trips, particularly commuter travel in the morning, that have a direct effect on Route twenty. We know Route twenty is at its capacity. It literally cannot accommodate more traffic than it currently does per hour without necessarily just extending those hours to other periods of the day. We know that that happens. We are also privy to monitoring of Biogen IDAC campus, so we have a very clear understanding of travel patterns for office use in particular, and where those trips are coming from within the local roadway network. And in that context, we have remaining concerns that they haven't fully accounted for the likely impact of the project along Route twenty, along Summer Street, and along the Church Street quarter as it connects to one seventeen. We cite reasons why, and by way of example, they're now assuming that about two percent of the office-related trips would actually use Route twenty to get to their facility. And that two percent of the trips would also be inclined to use Summer Street. It's our opinion, based on our experience in the quarter, and based on the surveys of other office uses on Route twenty that are proximate to this property and interchange, that those are woefully low estimates. That the trip increases that they've identified in the L P I R represent a very small fraction of the overall traffic activity that that, you know, two million square foot project will generate. And as a result, we advise, and it's cited in our review letter, that the town may have positions to suggest to Mass D O T and to NEBA that the applicant should be held responsible to conduct monitoring of very specific locations in town that include Route twenty, Summer Street, and the one seventeen quarter as it connects to Route, I'm sorry, Church Street as it connects to one seventeen. In fact, they have suggested they would do that, but the town stands to gain nothing more than a report at the end of the day that would indicate what those volumes are.
So, what's the point of that?
There is no point. So, we're strongly advising that the town advocate to Mass D O T that there needs to be some teeth to this, that there need to be performance criteria that would indicate that, based on measured performance, to the extent there is measured increases in traffic at those locations, that there be a mechanism to mitigate those traffic increases. And the form of that mitigation, quite frankly, in my experience, could be many things. It could be anywhere from a contribution, financial contribution, toward a long-term improvement goal of those locations. It could be assistance in the form of design of improvements to facilitate a petition for funding to construct those, or maybe even a partial contribution toward the construction of those long-term improvements. So, that's the part B that's really missing in what they're proposing to do in the final E I R. And I've had an initial discussion with Imai about drafting a letter assisting the town and what that request to Mass D O T would be, you know, as part of what we call the Section sixty-one finding, right? The mitigation obligation of that developer to Mass D O T. The location along Route twenty, it doesn't necessarily need to be pinned to only Route twenty and Summer Street. There are other locations along Route twenty that have been the subject of town study. Wellsley Street in particular, and School Street, for instance, two thousand thirteen studies, which indicate conceptual improvements, both of capacity and safety, design, related design fees, and construction-related costs for advancing those types of improvements. While I don't cite those in the draft letter, any petition back to Mass D O T as part of the Section sixty-one finding, in my opinion, should include not only the monitoring, but a commitment to advancing some form of contribution to the design and construction of those improvements, based on those monitoring results. So, that's what the letter says. We'd be glad to finalize this letter, this draft form, to include, you know, a more precise accounting for the work that the town has already done in those locations, Wellsley Street, School Street, Summer Street, to try to tie that in with the letter that would go to NEBA slash D O T. And I know we have two days, I know, to get something pulled together.
Just, just because I'm interested. M D M has experience doing this, obviously, you all do have experience doing this. Okay, what realistically are the chances of Mass D O T actually requiring a developer to financially help out the town?
I think.
Will they actually listen?
Sure. There is a documented impact from the number of trips that would be along Route twenty, right? We know that in the final E I R, they've quantified that. Now, we don't believe that they have properly, fully accounted for the light rate impact, right? They're saying it's two percent. We know that Biogen IDAC generates as much as a third of its traffic from the west, from the metro west communities. We know that Summer Street carries up to eighteen percent of the volume that goes to that campus.
Why are you only talking about Route twenty when it's actually on one seventeen? Would there be a huge increase, I assume, on one seventeen?
Well, we know that about a third of the eastbound traffic that's destined to one twenty-eight, that area, actually does use Church Street. We know that from.
But even, even without Church Street, aren't you going to have traffic coming from one seventeen? From, you know, Lincoln and Concord and?
Yes, but I think the level of traffic that is inclined to go, to travel on one seventeen is not on par with twenty, frankly. The U S Journey, U S Transit Journey to Work information for metro west communities like Wayland, Framingham, you know, those communities, Marlboro, would necessarily have an assignment to Route twenty as opposed to one seventeen. Higher population, higher employment, et cetera. So, when you look at those characteristics, one seventeen will carry some, at some level, of volume, but the higher proportion of the volume from the western communities will be down at twenty.
But isn't a lot of that, you know, there will be the Green Street connector, but even with the Green Street connector, won't a lot of that traffic coming from Route twenty still go down Church Street and end up on one seventeen?
Oh, sure.
Because ultimately, that's where the project is, is on one seventeen.
Yes, and that was a point of discussion by the board during the draft E I R stage. We know, based on the patterns on, at the juncture, if you will, of Route twenty and Boston, the Post Road, that about a third of that eastbound volume now goes through the town center to get to Church Street to one seventeen. Because the access to the twelve sixty-five Main Street project is more approximate to one seventeen, we expect that that pattern may arise. So, what we're suggesting in the letter is that, and we've identified it, that the intersection of one seventeen and Church Street really needs to be a focal point of that monitoring. We need to understand whether or not there's only a two percent impact or if it's twenty percent impact, right? There's a big difference. And we know that there are concerns that relate to the use of Church Street as a commuter route. It really is, it was never designed for that purpose. So, those are things that we bring up as concerns, should be subject to monitoring. It should provide a basis for mitigative actions by that applicant should they generate more than two percent impact, two percent of their trip activity. So, you know, I think a petition to D O T through the NEBA process would be appropriate to say, we as a community experience a high level of commuter travel from the western communities, it's documented, it's known, that in our opinion, and based on actual experience with local office use in this area, is more than two percent. And as a result, we are very concerned that the impact of this project is not wholly accounted for in the final E I R. And that would represent a material consequence to this community, to those locations along Route twenty and one seventeen. And that, to the extent you can quantify that material impact through the monitoring, that there should be provision for mitigation. And that that should include, and this is where it would help to be specific, should include advancing design and or construction, at least on a proportional impact basis, for improvements that we have already been looking at over the last three to four-year period, right? And we know that would include things like, you know, improving the merge area along Route twenty on its approach to Summer Street, it's documented in the Summer Street quarter study, like signalizing the Wellsley Street intersection, modifying the signal control and lane geometry at School Street, all of which have been documented throughout the public. There are cost estimates for those, but there's no actual design, and there's no ability to necessarily advance those beyond their current state. So, that's where, you know, my advice to the town would be, make sure D O T and NEBA understand that concern, that the Section sixty-one finding incorporated the monitoring, and that that includes a specific commitment for mitigation to the extent there's documented increase in the activity that represents a material impact to those locations.
But what if you can't really mitigate, I mean, what if it is twenty percent, which is possible? What if you can't really mitigate it other than to increase capacity? And really, the only way you can do that, I mean, you can signalize and all that kind of stuff, but ultimately, you're talking about more lanes of traffic, which is, you know, widening the roads, which will never happen.
I think your idea is to try to put five pounds of sugar in three.
Yeah, I just don't see.
That's going to happen, it's going to happen anyway. And this is at least one way to try and get Mass D O T to address and give us money, who are going to be facing by themselves.
Or can, can this major problem end up reducing the amount of square footage for the development? Because this town simply cannot handle more traffic coming through it.
Would I doubt that.
I think, you know, the applicant in this case is willing to spend somewhere between sixty and seventy million dollars in infrastructure to support this. And we concur that what they're proposing to do will actually make a big difference. There's also a recognition that when you connect Green Street to each change, that traffic patterns in and around the area, including western streets, will change as a result. There may be a propensity for people to use one seventeen more than they do today. Maybe that'll draw some traffic away from Route twenty. And perhaps the interchange improvements for capacity would make it easier to use Route twenty as well, right? So, we don't know ultimately what the net effect of that will be, and it's one of the provisions of why they're being asked to do monitoring, right? When they do that, or D O T's asking the same question. You know, as you build it, as infrastructure becomes operational, make sure you document what the patterns are and the changes so we can adjust what we need to do out of at Mass D O T or by the applicant to reflect those patterns. To your point, you know, when I bring up examples and try to be specific of other improvements that would make a difference, not necessarily for capacity per se, but safety. You could take the extension of the merge area westbound through the one thirty-three E P R signal, the Biogen IDAC signal on its approach to Summer Street. That is a substandard merge area. That is a location where crashes happen, documented in the Summer Street quarter study, and are in direct conflict with the shoulder area. People use the shoulder of Route twenty to bypass vehicles in direct conflict with bicyclists. You see it all the time. You know sideswipe collisions happen there quite often as a result. That's a substandard section, that's a safety issue. So, that's a very concrete example of where the town could point to that and say, look it, there's a substandard section here, this project has, you know, a material consequence of traffic increase at that location, at substandard location. They should be helping to be part of the solution. That's, that's an example. The other improvements that were identified, signal control at Wellsley Street, don't involve widening Route twenty per se. It involves signalizing Route twenty so that there's a better and more efficient form of control to get onto Route twenty to Wellsley Street. It would reduce congestion at School Street by eliminating the need to process left turns from School Street. They can now process that at the other signal. So, the ability to implement those improvements is there. They've been conceptually identified, and they may not be wholly supported by everyone in town. I grant you that. But they are, in fact, concrete examples of what the town could pursue with some form of contribution from a nearby project that has a material impact to those same locations. So, you know, my advice would be, if you don't ask, you won't receive. But the ask has to be very specific, the ask has to have a basis. And we believe that the monitoring provides a basis for measuring that, and to the extent there's, you know, the five, ten, fifteen percent impact that, of course, has a capacity and safety correlation to it, that that will provide the basis for the application, whether that's a check or a design, you know, to be concerned.
So, this is a joint letter that we're writing from the planning board and the board selectmen, right?
No, this is just us.
This is just us?
Yes. The last one with board of selectmen, too, we haven't had a chance to even take this to.
Okay, so this, it would just be the planning board? I mean, that seems fairly weak. I would think it would have to come from also the board of selectmen, that this is really a big issue here in Route.
I would say that the board of selectmen will act in their own, you know, volition, but would certainly be advised.
They don't have a traffic consultant like you do.
Right, but I would anticipate, you might, you could clarify, that they would consider any letter that this board issued and say, gee, we agree or don't agree, but certainly, I think, provide an appropriate basis for the board of selectmen to then also write their own letter saying, you know, we have these concerns.
Just like Mass D O T to pay attention to it, rather than from a little board of western that they can flip off, you know? Just like, need some gravitas. The whole town has to be behind it.
It would be better coming from board of selectmen, because they're, you know.
Let's see what we can do in, in effect of timing.
Two days.
I wanted to say about process, because this is a draft letter, and we have to include some revision.
Well, the letter can scan on some, but I think what we would do is assist Imai in drafting a letter that would be sent to NEBA, that would be addressed to NEBA with C C to Mass D O T, Public Private Development Unit, that would cite very specifically what your ask is. I think that's, that's the letter that we could begin that draft tomorrow.
So, straightforward, sort of condensed?
Yes.
Version of this?
This is a technical review.
Yes, technical, and the letter would be, hey, here's.
And then after we, they will read.
Yeah. Yeah, and this could get lost in the shuffle, frankly. But, you know, the letter from the town, presumably through the board of selectmen ultimately, to make a very specific ask with a basis would be appropriate. And, you know, that would garner attention, and we need to process, they need to address that. And ultimately, even once they get past the E I R stage, and they've got a certificate from NEBA, they've got to then act on it, Section sixty-one finance, and that's a different process. And that's, that's where the rubber meets the road. That's the legal obligation of an applicant to provide mitigation for a project.
Should their modeling be inaccurate?
Correct, right. If their impact is what they're saying in here, yes, there's an impact, but it's not in and of itself going to create a condition that independently will trigger the need for some massive improvement over twenty. But, you know, they're now estimating somewhere near sixty directional trips, right? Eight hours over twenty. For a two million square foot project, that sounds a little. Yes.
Yeah.
And it's relied by our real experience with known, you know, entities here.
Yeah, it's nice to have the background history a little bit on Route twenty. I mean, to see what it actually, since you monitor it.
There's a lot of data that.
Right, we've got a lot of data that we wouldn't have had without the Biogen IDAC.
Right, right, so.
So, again, question of process. This is a summary report, but there's going to be a truncated version of this.
So, well, there's, there's two parts to this. So, there's the letter that line board authored, which is kind of independent of what, or just really references what Bob has done. So, we need to come up with the, the letter that is actually the specific ask, that's part of this. And that's what we need to do by Friday.
Yeah.
Yes, so how do we vote on this? If it's not.
Let's basically, I think what you need to do is basically agree with the recommendation in Bob's report, and then we need to agree to the specific ask that we're gonna do. Whether, you know, come up with four right now, that we're gonna need Bob as a good suggestion. Those are the ones we work with, and those are the ones we do.
Distill it to them.
Yes.
Yes, sorry.
So this has a broad statement of that approach, but it's not so specific to say mitigation, you know, being requested is X. That's the ask. Diana?
I just wanted to ask.
Can you identify yourself?
Diana Chaplin, lovely. I just wanted to ask about, with the money that the Boston Properties has left to correct the dangerous intersection at Summer Street, and the fact that the town hasn't used that, does that, is that a problem? As we ask for more money to fix problems if we're not fixing the ones that we already have money for? Or is it because it's private, it doesn't impact it?
So the, in response to that through the chair, just for clarification, there is money being held in escrow by the town. It was granted by Boston Properties for the core property, Boston Properties. And that, the language that triggers the ability to use that has to do with the Summer Street Quarter in particular as a first line, which was the subject of the Summer Street Quarter Study, in which very specific mitigating actions from traffic calming things were identified along with costs. That money could be used for that purpose to the extent the town saw value in doing that and need to do that. Once that money, and if that money were applied for that purpose, it could, I believe could be used for other purposes along the Route 20 Quarter. But I'm not sure of how much money is actually left in that account, to what extent the town would want to focus that on the Summer Street Quarter itself, and what balance of money would be available for any other action on Route 20, whether that was extending the merge area as an example, or other actions. So really, that's, the board of selectmen actually makes that determination, I understand. It's not this board. So it's, I know it's not a straightforward.
But you don't see a correl, there's no concern about asking for their own related?
No, no, no. You know, there are many locations along Route 20 that would be impacted by that project based on its sheer magnitude and the possibility that it will generate more than 2% of its office trips through the town. So we could certainly expand that monitoring, and I think they're at least partway there in their final EIR, to include those other locations with the provision that they need to be performance criteria to say, you know, if there's an increase of 1% to 2% here, you gotta mitigate it. And the issue of what's the mitigation? But that, it won't have any bearing on that.
Okay. Do you, do the board members have anything else you'd like to say or add?
Do you want to have, like, if two hundred people decide to do this letter, do you want to read it, people put out since you are the editor? With your time on Friday, people vote it in.
I mean, maybe, but can we vote on this letter now?
Right.
Yeah.
And on the, as well as the, you know, the premises? I mean, we might not be voting on the actual wording of Bob's letter, but we could be voting on the concepts, the premises
Yes.
in his letter.
And the recommendation too. I think that's what we want to vote on, really, is his recommendation that then authorizes us to go forward with the drafting of the second letter or that, you know, more concrete memo.
That sounded good, that sounded like we could make people so moved.
So, go ahead. So the recommendation is not in your current letter?
I'm sorry?
Your recommendations are not in this, your current letter?
Well, actually, if you look at page two, after the second bullet, right? The first
Yeah.
larger paragraph. And we do recommend that the town petition MassDOT to specifically require traffic and safety monitoring of the following impacted intersection locations as part of its section six to refining for the project, right? And we cite that, so that's our recommendation. That the provisions within the section six to refining should include the following traffic and safety monitoring components, and I named them.
But that's just the monitoring, that's not the.
Well, then I go on to page three to say that there should be a commitment to provide proportional funding contribution mitigative actions to address operational and or safety improvements at these locations, including two things. Recommended improvements identified in the Summer Street Quarter Study, I was trying to be specific. Yeah, B, signal control at 117 Church Street as an example. What I did not identify in here is what I described conceptually tonight, that as Wells and Street, School Street, this is still a draft letter. I would advise that those locations will be as impacted because of Route 20 and should be included in monitoring and should nothing. So I think where I can issue this letter as final, I can include those locations with a specific reference, owing to the other prior efforts and attempts to identify conceptual improvements.
As traffic backs up on Route 20, it backs up on all those.
Absolutely, yeah, they're all connected. So that, you know, I would be glad to issue this in final with that understanding that we will add those two locations.
So before someone makes a motion, there's, I read this last night, but because it was a PDF, I couldn't.
Oh, okay, in a tweet.
Yeah, I couldn't mark it up easily. And I know that there were deducted typos in there, so maybe you just want to be free to before you send it out. But on page two, the first paragraph from the bullet, is there supposed to be a period there, or are there words missing after raised crossings? I was.
Where's raised?
Is it in bold at the end of the first paragraph?
Middle of page.
Oh, okay, yeah, there should be.
When he's, it seems like a.
Yeah.
It seems like something is missing between, or I didn't understand it. So that was the obvious one, and there are others that, you know, it's like and instead of and or.
Okay.
But, you know, it's still a little word, so spell check doesn't pick it up. So I could, so.
Okay, I move that we accept, I would say, a summary of this memorandum as amended.
Well, broadly.
First, we're doing a letter from the planning board, right?
Sorry, there are two letters here?
Right.
I'm gonna give number one, the memorandum to 1265 Main Street.
Right, and that's from the planning board.
Right.
And then we want to have one that is.
So you want two motions?
Well, I guess we do, because one's, the second one is a summation, you know, of, with specific requests.
Okay, so let's do the first one first.
Move that we accept the memorandum, which, as I understand it, is going to be distilled further.
No, well, this is gonna be sent by SIS, right?
Well, it will be finalized to include an additional statement to include the two other locations.
Right, Summer Street.
Right.
Well, that's your.
That's cool. That's Bob's letter.
And you would incorporate his letter into your.
Only by reference.
Only by reference.
Yes.
So this is basically.
So this basically stands as whatever corrections you want to make. Yeah, so there's no further to do with this substantial change.
This is it.
And we accept the memorandum with the subject 1265 Main Street. Phase two EIA, final ER comments.
With additions, correct?
With.
With.
With additions, corrections.
I see noted.
Okay, yes, second.
On favor?
Aye.
I, unanimous?
Aye.
Unanimous.
And then we need a record, I mean, a letter for this.
A motion. For the attached letter from MDM.
MDM that's sent by the whole town, right?
Well, I would say by the planning board, and if possible, we'll get the selectmen on.
Okay, right.
But that's true of the memorandum.
Yes. The letter is just being attached to.
Okay, and this is the one that's gonna be referenced?
Yes.
The updated version.
And it's going to be modified with those additional intersections added to.
How do we say that? MDM letter? MDM summation letter?
Well, yeah.
Attachment?
I think the letter, well, I think what we're gonna do is we'll have a basis. This is our recommendation to the town as amended. And then we will, I will work with EMI to develop a letter that would be signed by the planning board and or other members of town that would include this by reference, but may be more specific in the ask. You know, and that would cite very specific plans and prior efforts that were done for those locations in terms of what the mitigation ask is, right? And that could be for design of the, for advancement of design and financial contribution. And, you know, mitigation that, whatever that contribution is, should be proportional to the impact of the project. And we can define what the term proportional is.
So I want that we do, that not we, EMI and Bob do a summation letter, a summary letter of the 1265 Main Days EII Comments memorandum with specific requests to the Department of Transportation.
And that we approve that letter. So we're, we approve the letter that they're going to write, which is based on this letter with some revisions.
Right, okay, here we go.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
I, unanimous.
Okay.
So we'll vote eight.
It's off tomorrow.
Have fun, you get your work cut out for you.
Now we have two decisions.
Thank you.
And by Bob. 19 North Avenue, I'll do that one first.
Uh, yes.
Nineteen North Avenue.
Look here, it's written out.
Oh, right. It's got a little boy on it, it's a little boy on it.
Yes.
Correct.
And Nessie. Oh, there it is. So obviously, on the first page, we're taking off. A little chair, and we're gonna put in Stephen Oppenheimer, acting chair.
Yeah.
So the formal address is changing from 219 North Ave to Main. 219, it's just the driveway, I'm asking silly questions, it's just the driveway, it's being. Yeah, I'm sorry, it's late enough, really disconfused.
They, no. They are requesting an address change, but for some reason that we can't nail down, that just has not been happening. So until it does happen.
Have a good night.
Yeah. It's 219, yeah. But they want the address to be overbooked, overlooked. Right, overlooked, overlooked. So that's interesting. How do we reference that somehow in this, taking a site point approval so that 10 years from now, someone would be able to say, what site point? We don't even have a site point.
Parcel number.
Parcel number.
As the reference point.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we could, in parentheses, say soon to be.
Yeah, well, I don't know, what is, the future one would have to say formerly known as.
Yes.
Yes. Or this, when that happens, this would have to be amended.
Well, I would imagine it's still gonna be recorded to that parcel at the registry. So regardless of the address change, you know.
Who would have the mailing address?
Yeah, who would still have, the parcel number would still attach to this.
Yeah. Just know how sometimes things get screwed up.
Oh, yeah, they, they absolutely.
People will be wrecking their heads. Plus, we do make reference to it many, many times on page five, that it's being relocated to overlook Route 20. That might help.
So this is correct, there are no, there's no air conditioning in this house?
Right?
There are no.
There's no air conditioning proposed for this house?
Not currently. The applicant's plan was to hammer it all out with their AC consultant and then add in the exterior units. And we said, no, it's gonna have to be an amendment if it's not currently shown on the plans. So as of right now, they have not proposed any outdoor AC units. I mean, they haven't proposed, they have big compressor. Right, yeah. Okay, but that's a very interesting question about some of the new wonderful Mitsubishi sort of.
Yeah, but it still requires an outdoor, you know, it's just smaller.
Right, but, I mean, do we actually do window units? Some of these are almost like a window unit.
Well, not really.
Not really, right?
Not really.
Yeah. And if it's on the side of a house.
I mean, you can make a case, you know, but it still generates noise.
Yeah.
I could tell you.
Sort of window units.
I could tell you, our unit existed around 48 DVA, and the zoning board gave us a lot of trouble.
Really? Window unit?
Not window unit, it's a Mitsubishi.
One of those two wall things?
Mitsubishi.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's very quiet. And they're still expressed tremendous concern.
Well, that's interesting. So when does this COA get recorded with the town clerk after we approve it?
After. No, that's the end of the period. So the draft, after whatever changes we make to the draft, then Kathy writes it up, and then you, Steve, are gonna have to review them and say that it's basically give the sign on.
What am I reviewing?
After we change, whatever changes we make, the final one.
Does anybody have any changes?
I have one minor one that I would need to review again.
Oh, and here's this exterior AC that is not currently proposed, and appendix.
Right.
Right, right here, right. An amendment, okay, great.
So, okay, so go ahead. On page five, item 1D, that should be CC because there's a special condition. And then my only other, so that's the only thing I found. Then I have a question on page six, utilities underground, even though.
on page six, utilities underground, even though there are, it's an existing house that, you know, that they're adding on to, don't require utilities underground?
No.
Utilities underground is the standard.
Is it? It is.
It is.
It is, it is one that's listed on your design criteria, utilities underground is.
So why aren't we requiring that for this house? If that's what we normally do? Not sure. Do you know? This has never come up in any of the discussions with the owner?
Not that I know of, no. So that may just have been an oversight on our part, but we didn't see that.
I think...
This is, this is a little more unusual in the sense that what's triggering this is an existing structure that's having more than 75%...
Seventy-five percent of the roof taken off, so to do that...
I don't know if that's a legitimate exception or not, I think that we need to ask Al, in his opinion, if that is enough to basically get a waiver for this particular, not a waiver.
Well, it speaks to the site work, that's the question. If there's a certain amount of site work that can be done, if they wipe the slate clean.
I'm sure.
But remember, they're coming in from another...
They're coming from another driveway, too, yeah, they should be...
I mean, I don't know whether that means the utilities have to come in up in the gap of that hill, or are they gonna switch them off?
It might not be that difficult.
But it could be, could be partial, in other words, yeah. That's the question.
I would think it could as part of the driveway.
Yeah, so it's a cutting of driveway, I think. Yes, yes, the utility will run a certain way up that road.
Yeah, gotcha.
Yeah, but on the same side, you know, then you end up having to go in the street.
How are they coming in now? I don't even think we know that. They might already be coming in from north, from, from overlook.
Anyway, that's interesting.
So, I think we need to resolve that before...
Yeah, but you, you really wanna hold this up?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know, I may, we may not have any choice. If that's what we require, we can't just arbitrarily not require it for this house, unless it's a legitimate exception because it's an existing house.
Because it isn't...
It's partially demolished.
Because it is, it's a partial demo. I don't know that you wanna make that exception for every partial demo.
Well, I don't, I don't know either, that's why this is really a question for Al.
So, I mean, I would think your safer option is to condition it that the utilities will run underground, they are running a driveway from overlook.
Yeah.
So...
So there will be site work going on there anyway.
There is site work going on there, put it, and, you know, have it.
Rather than delay this.
Have it run underground, yeah. And then if they can't do that, then, you know, it's like the AC, they can go back in.
Okay, but I still think that you should discuss it with Al, one of you, to see what this amendment is. And for tonight, we could condition it on, on the fact that this will be changed, that they do need to run underground, unless, could we say unless the board chair builds the wires or...
I think, I honestly think the cleaner way is to just come back for an amendment, okay, if they do, if they really need to do...
It would be a memorandum.
Yeah, it would be a memorandum, it can be something that we can do at one night, and you can all kind of discuss as a policy there. But I mean, nonetheless, I think point taken, we should, when, we should have a standard for when, what makes that okay.
Right.
Yeah, and I don't think existing houses necessarily a reason. It's existing house plus something, and I don't know what that something is.
Yeah.
So we'd be approving this with the utilities underground, and this is an exception?
So that would be the change?
That would be the change, yeah.
And then they would come back for waiver, which is what it was.
Would someone like to make a motion?
Sure. I would like to approve the COA, the scenic road site plan approval of 219 North Avenue with the changes noted.
Second. And those changes include burying the utilities?
The burying the utilities. On page, the change on page, what, six?
Six. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I'm gonna chop them in. Um, I, I'm just curious, where it's scenic road site plan review as opposed to RGFA, does that, would that have an impact on the way that, because that, isn't it just the jurisdiction of the first 20 feet for the wires? Might be misunderstanding this, but it says that it's, you're, you're acting in capacity of the scenic road committee instead of the planning board, I think.
No, this, um, okay, yeah, like, I know what you're saying, and that's, that's a little bit of a confusing part of the bylaw, because there's the scenic road, when you're doing work within the right of way, and I believe what you're talking about is that, and then there's a trigger for site plan approval for the listed scenic roads within the zoning bylaw, which although they both use the term scenic roads, are different review criteria.
Right.
And then different permits, so, in this case, the planning board is acting as the planning board doing the site plan approval.
Oh, okay.
Okay. 327, is it? Boston Post Road. Where is this thing?
All right, one minor change was made to this after it was posted on the website, where we just had the reference for the cost of the waiver mentioned, recording with the registry deeds, and it should have said, uh, the town clerk, under special conditions.
Where is it?
Page 13, under special conditions.
Oh, yeah.
So, the version you have here is corrected to say town clerk, registry deeds.
Why is that in here?
Yeah.
At all, I mean, it's not our standard thing yet.
Do you want a motion?
Uh, the applicants were concerned, normally the board's practice has been to issue a decision within two weeks, and that has not been the case, because I'm here part-time and with two boards, I can't turn a decision around in two weeks. So they asked if they could be given this opportunity, if they gathered all the necessary signatures to have that prepared wait. The way it's shaking out right now, I don't think they would pursue that, but they wanted to have that option.
Sure. It does make sense to consider that, since the 20-day of the grid is a function of your rules, if this serves the same purpose, that could be a standard. Because if they're essentially the same thing, you either go 20 days to appeal, or you get everybody who could have appealed to say it's okay.
Right, right.
There's no harm in making this a standard either, I think.
No, I agree with that.
Yeah. I'm sure most people would just be easier to just do the 20 days.
It probably would be easier to do the 20 days, yeah.
So obviously, page one, Al's not here, Tony's not here, Steve Oppenheimer, actually chairman.
In this case, in this case, I, I would say it doesn't necessarily have to be a special condition, considering the difference I'm suggesting.
Yeah.
Okay, so converted to a C.
Exactly, that's right.
And add to the special conditions page, or?
No, if it's a C, then you don't have to add to the special condition. And then on the next page, we have the same existing utilities issued.
They don't run it overhead, no?
That's too far for run, right?
Yeah, I'm trying to think what it says.
I don't see the street.
I don't believe, I don't believe that runs overhead.
It's such a historic property.
Yeah.
But...
Well, we're gonna have to do the same thing.
But it would at least be able to say existing, we should be able to say existing, if they are underground, we should say existing utilities are underground.
Underground.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have to assume that, unless we hear otherwise, but I think regardless, it's going to have, they're gonna have to be underground.
Yeah.
Just like we did for the prior certificate of action.
I thought the light, I thought the light exemption was, was said beautifully, that's exactly how it should be.
Yeah, that's very good.
That's it.
That's it. So is that, I guess that's gonna take a little bit of investigation on the utilities, to see what the story is. If they're not already underground, they will need to be underground. Would someone like to make a motion?
Sure.
I move that we accept the certificate of action for scenic road site plan approval for 327, Boston Post Road is met with.
Second, sorry.
All in favor?
I'm looking for those.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
Did you say unanimous or unanimous?
Unanimous.
You want to say it like that?
I don't think you're gonna see it from you.
But...
You, this is such a big thing.
It looks clean.
Look at this.
There would be something coming in.
Yeah, you'd see some sort of...
Well, look, look at 219 North, see if we could see it there.
It's a little low, actually, first, so we can see what the trail...
219 North definitely came in.
219 North definitely came in.
Down there is a pole.
I can see a pole.
See the shaft?
Seven.
So...
Forty-four straight.
Is that 44? I'll send the page for Paul, too.
That was straight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They may be buried many years ago.
Yeah.
And they may be came in, they may be came in straight this way, rather than...
I mean, I would go current, but you said it's a target, so that has to come in underground.
But the others, yeah, the templates say, uh, existing utilities are going now. That's why I'm supposed to, in the utility discussion.
I'm not sure, I was down in that, or in that, yeah, yeah.
Okay. That's done.
So basically, no utilities are supposed to have.
Yeah, unless a board makes a special exception. There was one time where they did, because, um, because they would have to run through the...
What do you mean?
It's supposed to be Google Maps.
The connection here or something.
Uh, that too. We usually put it underground, yeah. No, my, my bathroom's in it, so I didn't check.
Yeah, no, I just figured, uh, it was only if it was in town, it would be, but...
I'm not so sure if you would see the...
Why is something else on this? Bing, Bing has a slightly different angle, so it might be easier to see it.
The bird's eye, yeah. Can I go to Bing this way?
Yeah.
Bing.
Maps.
Bing Maps.
It's 211, what is it, 211?
211, my bad.
It's 211, 211, I was...
211.
It's only 10, 40 pieces.
Yeah?
Yeah, exactly, so I think that would be a satellite.
Man, I don't know.
It's a satellite thing somewhere. Speaking.
There's some things going on there.
So it is...
It doesn't seem to be...
It is on the south side?
Yeah.
Now, the question is, subject property.
Yeah.
I bet it's off of overlook.
I bet it's off of overlook already.
Okay, so let's move. That's overlook, right? I don't know that.
I'm not sure.
You don't have to, you can just press.
I usually use Google.
Yeah, Google Maps, it certainly, in this case, would be better.
Oi. Felt tab.
There's the house.
Maybe it's kind of gone.
And so... Really? Hello.
It's frozen.
Wait, maybe we have to do this.
It's frozen.
Well...
Okay, now, other way.
Just looking here.
So it is on the south side?
Yes, definitely on the south side. Lovely tower.
Come now.
Now. It bits a little bit, a little bit, right down there.
There we go.
Nice. We're now up the road. It's so fun.
There's the overhead.
Yep, there it is going up here, but we got to see.
Where's the poles?
Why is it letting me view maps?
It's letting me hire them.
Oh, there we go.
Or you just scroll like you do that.
Can you just get up here? Do you think we ought to go?
We always do.
Here it is going up the street.
Yeah.
But you know it's not going to let us go up the street because there's...
You have to look at the difference. I mean, the poles are on that side.
Right.
There is no pole in the property.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it could be the...
Could be that it's already underground.
And maybe that's...
Yeah.
So, again, you need to check on that.
Yeah.
Cool.
Okay.
Any other business?
Yes.
We're getting the minutes.
Two minutes.
Steve edited his minutes and Al edited his, so we have April twelfth to twenty-sixth.
Who's doing the March twenty-ninth?
What's up?
Who's doing the March twenty-ninth minutes? Because those are getting kind of ancient.
Those are getting kind of stale there?
Yeah. Then we get in trouble.
You was sunned the last time.
Yeah.
So if I go to the video, I can find out what I didn't do, what I was supposed to do.
Yes.
Okay.
So... April twelfth, we have?
So we're supposed to do three twenty-nine?
I don't know right now. Just remember handing them out.
And I did read my...
Okay. I think we just assume that he's here and make a motion.
Yeah.
Okay. Someone want to make a motion for the April twelfth?
Actually, I did want to say one thing.
Oh, yes, you did.
Yeah. In that, I'm not entirely sure, but when I check with the state's requirements, I think we're supposed to, we should say when the meeting is called to order.
Okay.
And when it is adjourned.
When it's adjourned, okay.
Yeah. Those are just sort of simple things for the future. I believe they're supposed to be here.
Now you?
So, can I move that we approve, is it April twelfth?
Yes, you may.
No, it's been known, thank you. The minutes of the meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Now we can just say anymore.
Unanimous.
Unanimous, unanimous.
Okay, and then we have the minutes from April twenty-sixth. And I don't know why, one of the sentences that I added is underlined, because I don't think the other changes that I made are highlighted. But on page three, after Turner, that should be underlined.
Oh.
Maybe you didn't accept that.
I did initial, in any case, not underlined.
Yeah. Okay. Does someone want to make a motion?
First, Ken.
I move to accept the minutes from April twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen, as a minister.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
Okay. Then the nineteenth, Sue, did you want to?
I did.
Do those?
Yes. I would like to be, I'd like to.
Okay. Oh, I know they were...
Reach.
Perfect.
I didn't get a chance to, just give me a second.
I mean, if we're talking about underlining, I suppose we have one on page one that we see. And one of the bullets. One, two, six, five, will increase.
But it means so much more when it's underlined.
Yeah, I don't know. And that is something that goes on sort of throughout these, like on page three, middle of the page, you'll see that michaud is bold and italic as well, but nowhere else. So these are just sort of, I don't know.
Formating.
Yeah, it's just a format thing. Really minor, but, you know, it's embarrassing bringing it up because that's a long, long section that you did a very nice job of just doing all this, I thought.
Is there a new set of minutes that need to be assigned, like these five twenty-three, or everything is going to sign?
No, five twenty-three...
Five twenty-three?
But, I mean, what did you say, sir?
I said five twenty, yeah.
Yeah, five twenty-three.
Why is there five seventeen, nineteen, and twenty-three? They're not two weeks apart.
Because those are the days we had the special meetings for Boston Post Road. So, yes, five seventeen, somebody needs to do, the nineteenth is already done, twenty-three is not ready yet. Twenty-three, I have the draft from militia, but I haven't gone through it and added any materials.
So you're saying that the seventeenth is not assigned?
The seventeenth is not assigned yet.
How about the third?
The third was assigned last time.
So the three twenty-nine and May third are assigned to someone.
Yes.
I don't know which meeting May seventeenth is, if I intended that or not.
May seventeenth was...
May seventeenth, it's a regular meeting.
And we followed it, yeah. Then we followed it on the nineteenth with the special morning meeting to review, to review Bob's traffic findings. And then we followed, the twenty-third was the special meeting for, for Boston Properties. That was the one we had in the auditorium, the joint meeting with the selectmen. So, actually, that one, I don't remember what the issue was. At least you did get me the portion for the selectmen's meeting was done by Kara. The portion that was outstanding was when we went back and did five and nine halfless, where we basically reviewed the decision for that. So that's what's, that's what's waiting on that. Okay.
You know, I have a note here in my calendar so long ago that says, review the meeting board minutes for March... Never mind, I already covered it.
You just added it.
Yeah, that was from March first, you're right.
So...
So now it wasn't reviewing note minutes for that particular meeting, so...
So that's what already makes to be assigned, May seventeenth. So, I'll let you...
I'll take, I'll take May's. It should be planned for another, whatever the minutes I was supposed to have.
And we do, I mean, we can, can you move to approve on the nineteenth?
We're talking about the nineteenth, right?
Usually you can move.
Yes, I, I move to approve the minutes from May nineteenth, two thousand seventeen.
I second.
All in favor? Aye. Unanimous. Is there anything else we need to discuss before we move to adjourn the meeting? It's so early, it's not eleven yet.
I know, you want to hang around a second?
Yeah. I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.